This conference will now be recorded.
Do you even do that anymore?
I do, actually. It was funny, my legs were so cramped up there, except just like when I was sleeping. Like, just not, I don't climb as much because I do all the traction inspecting. But I was on the pole for like six hours a day, and I was like, yeah.
Yeah, just, he was your climbing chariot. He started before they had bucket trucks. And so they climbed everything. And he had to have me replace him inside the rallying house.
Sounds like rated stars.
Yeah, ready, go.
Is Tom not coming either? Tom's not coming, he's holding the mayor's by the hair. He's supposed to be the mayor leader.
Good morning, everyone. This is Saturday, January seventh, 2023, and we'll kickstart our city council retreat meeting. Call it to order, and Clark, can you please start the recording? We'll do roll call.
Councilmember Fox.
Present.
Councilmember Casper.
Here.
Councilmember Boyle.
Here.
Councilmember Strobin.
Absent, excused.
Mayor Protem Servany.
Present.
Mayor Thornton.
Absent, excused. All right, that will take us to our presentation, and we'll turn things over to Jeff Swanton.
All right, so, uh, let's see if I can make this mouse work here. This mouse isn't working.
It is going all of this. Jeff, it's actually, can you like, make this very spot?
I can't click even think, except the, oh, there it is. Here we go, okay. There we go.
It's catching up.
It is catching up. So just by way of introduction, city council retreats, they're meant to serve as an opportunity to have less formal open discussion for the council with support from staff. There's no public comment received today, and the council will not be taking any formal action in these meetings. It's really just an opportunity to get together and talk. I have prepared a bunch of material that we can, you know, use to kind of spur some discussion, but this is really more about us listening and supporting your thoughts and conversation about the city. But what I've prepared is some materials on mission, vision, values, and strategy. Talk about what that could look like, some materials on economic development, brief update on the La Center Police Department, Ridgefield Police Department discussions, where we're at in that process, and we just have time for open discussion. We can cover any or all or none of these topics as you would like to, but I think we'll go ahead and just proceed here to the mission, vision, values stuff. So kind of a refresher on if you've ever been through an exercise where you're preparing mission, vision, values statements. Mission statement is a concise explanation of the organization's reason for existence. It's why we exist. So it describes what our purpose is and what our overall intention is. A mission statement supports the vision and serves to communicate purpose and direction to leadership, employees, customers, vendors, and other stakeholders. So some questions when you're drafting one of these is try to identify what is our organization's purpose, why do we exist? No, that's okay. Just, you know, just like the lights flickering kind of thing, right? So, um, so as we think about that, if someone, this, these should be intuitive things, you know, a lot of these statements are very wordy and, you know, look nice on a wall but don't really mean much to an organization. And I like to talk about these things in the context of, you know, your intuition. What's your, what's your gut say? So if I, you know, grab your shoulders and shook you from a deep sleep in the middle of the night and ask you, why does this organization exist? That gut response should be what describes a mission statement, right? So it's not something you want to overthink. It should be useful and intuitive, right? So if I were to do that, why would, why does the city of La Center exist?
Well, the community for sure, quite a place for people to live.
There's the city, there's the city organization you might think about, what is it that we do?
I guess I'm trying, trying not to overthink it, but it's, there's, there's the, the overall city, which is obviously, what Sean said, it's the place to live, but the city as an entity is the, is the, uh, the governing body that takes care of everything to make sure that it is a, a safe and comfortable place for people to live. And then within that, every department has a specific responsibility, including the council. So that's where it's easy to, like I said, over, overthink it and get way too deep into the weeds when you're trying to come up with a, a mission statement. So, um, I guess the, the city of La Center as an area and a overarching umbrella could be, um, something that would, you know, our mission should be to provide a safe and livable community.
I, I, you nailed it, I think, when you said, you know, the purpose of this organization. So Sean identified it's community, it's location, right? But this organization specifically exists to make that community a safe, comfortable place to live, right? So those two words, safe and comfortable, now when you talk about what this organization does to, to make that happen, what comes to mind?
Financial responsibility.
Yep, okay. I like to think of it in terms of the services that we put on the street, you know, the boots on the ground that we have out there, the, you know, household contact the city has or person-to-person contact and what that looks like. And that happens in a variety of ways, right? We have wastewater treatment that we do. So we've got public works and that streets, parks, we've got stormwater utility, right? So that's important, and thinking about how that all fits in, we provide law enforcement services, right? So however that looks, whether that's contractor, whether we have a department, we have the responsibility to provide law enforcement services. We're not in the water business, we're not in the fire DMS business, other agencies provide those for us.
But we organize those things, the same as like, like the, like garbage service. So things that, things that make a community livable are, like what you said, law enforcement, but providing city codes to limit garbage pileup and mandatory recycling or something along those lines. So the stuff that makes a society a society is, you know, we don't have to bury our garbage in the backyards and the streets stay paved and the water runs off of the roofs and into a drain and goes away instead of piling up.
Yeah.
And washing away the, eroding the streets or wherever, so.
We have building and planning, right? That has a role in safe, comfortable community. What, what happens in communities sometimes? You know, you put a bunch of humans in one location and what's bound to happen?
They don't get along.
They don't get along, there's conflict, never, right? So the city has to sit as the arbiter of those conflicts in a lot of cases, right? So we have laws and codes, and the city has a role in objectively, dispassionately enforcing those, right? The city has no respect or remorse. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So let's move on to the next one here. Vision statement. It looks forward, creates a mental image of the ideal state that the organization wishes to achieve. It's inspirational and aspirational and should challenge employees and leadership. Questions considered when drafting vision statements include what problem are we seeking to solve, what problem seeking to solve, or is this one problem, right? Where are we headed? If we achieved all strategic goals, what would we look like 10 years from now? Right, so this is pointing us at what direction are we going? What do we want these, what do we want our community to become? What do we want it to look like? Any thoughts on vision?
I mean, I think if we're gonna, I guess, look at the challenges that we face as a community, like, I mean, I think that, you know, we need to be able to provide some basic amenities, you know, and I think building the right infrastructure to do that and allow that is what is going to help, you know, appropriate those types of businesses and organizations and, you know, what else you want to call them, but to be able to come here and, you know, establish a business and provide a service and, you know, grocery stores, you know, healthcare.
Yeah, okay. So the city's role there is to create that environment, right, where those things can happen, try to help private land become development-ready through infrastructure investment, planning, and so on. Yeah, okay. Other thoughts on vision?
I think before you, before you even can put a pen to paper to make that vision, the people that are directly involved with that, and this is, for me anyway, this has been kind of a slow, a slow process and a humbling one, is what are, what are the, what are the boundaries that we're allowed to do that within? You know, obviously, everything comes down to money. So the, the budget constraints are a huge challenge to overcome when, when you're, when you're trying to create a vision. But then, you know, even if money wasn't the issue, then what are you bound by legally? And then who is it that's responsible for, for driving that vision? Like I said, the, one of the things that I've, I've learned is that the council itself is, is, I mean, it seems like too often we, we, we have to come in and, and we, we make the decision afterwards. I think I, I expected to be more involved on the front end of some of, of this stuff. And, um, and it's just, it's just not the case, and it's not really the role of, of the council to do that. So having staff know that, that they can come up with, with ideas and we will support it on the other end is just, it's part of that, that, that boundary thing that I think that, that there needs to be more education on and figure out what it is that, you know, even if money, like I said, wasn't a, wasn't a factor, what can we, what can we do within our responsibility? And then how do we encourage staff to come up with those, those ideas then, within their scope for?
Some great thoughts. Melissa, Liz, any other thoughts from either of you? Okay. So moving on to values. A value statement is the core principles that guide and direct the organization and its culture. In a values-led organization, the values create a moral compass for the organization, its leaders, and its employees. It guides decision-making and establishes a standard against which actions can be assessed. These core values are an internalized framework that is shared and acted on by leadership. This is really the, what's important to us as we do our mission, right? What values are unique to our organization? What values should guide the operations of our company or organization? What conduct should our employees uphold? Sometimes values also are part of an ethics statement, but it's really about how we do our work together, right? What are some of the values that are important to you with respect to your role as a council? And how you conduct your business, how the city conducts its business?
I mean, I think integrity has a lot to do with that, when you have to be able to, you know, show and, um, display, you know, your integrity, like how you're going to, like, see things through, what you're going to do to make that happen, and, um, I guess just being, being who you say you are, you know, type of thing.
Yeah. Yeah, integrity itself is an interesting one to try to, like, define. You've got to get into the weeds in terms of what does integrity mean, right? And usually it's, reliability is a part of that. So, you know, if you put something in a machine, it produces a consistent result, reliable, consistent result every time, right? So you would say that machine has integrity and not respect, right? It's reliable, it's consistent. What are, what are some other values that are important?
Professional respect and honesty and everything that we do, I think is important in our actions with, you know, at all levels, with the community that we serve, obviously, with the businesses, um, even when we're out there having discussions with others in group sessions, meetings, conventions, or whatever, trying to convey that, that strength, that level of professionalism, because oftentimes, in the role of representing a small community, perceptions are made that were less than perhaps larger cities. So it becomes even more important for us to convey that, you know, when you find in our message and that we're, um, you know, going to see it through, and to see your projects through and, and what our vision we have for our own community to be during our term, and then, you know, watch it continue to grow for the community that we serve.
So unified or unity could be a value as well?
I think unity and, um, it's hard, hard to really wrap around a lot of those words in terms of, and a lot of it's hard actions.
Right, I mean, if you think about, and we've talked about this before, the practical impact of, you know, not being unified, right? One of the things we're constantly doing is on our legislative side, we prepare our legislative agenda, and we go and we stump for some cash from the state, from the federal government, to try to fund projects that would be very difficult for us to fund on our own, right? We encumber a lot of debt, we take on a lot of debt to do some of those projects, we didn't, weren't able to get some grants. And, you know, if we have a project that's controversial, you know, I think the shining example of controversial project right now in our region is this piece of green iron down the road on I-5 that connects Oregon and Washington, right? There's a lot of controversy about what that project should look like, what should be included, how it should be funded. And so if, um, you know, if you're a federal legislator or a state legislator, how comfortable do you feel wading into that and taking a position of support, saying, oh yeah, I'll work hard in Olympia or Washington DC to get money for that project? It's tough, right? And that's a big one in our region. I've seen examples like in Battleground where there's been a four-three split on the council, and you go to a legislator and you're like, we really need some funds for this capital project, and they go, well, I don't want to get in the middle of whatever y'all have going on down there, right? La Center in the past has done really well at getting funds from the state because there's been that unified voice in the council, that everybody agrees, yep, this is an important project, we stand behind it, and we're, you know, supportive of getting funds, everyone's got the same message to legislators, and that has some power, because unity is a scarce commodity amongst governing bodies at any point.
I think professional disagreement is, is critical to that, to that process as well. And, but I, I think that, that even, even a issue of a, of a, of a four-three split, like you said, okay, they made, three people may have voted no, but there's still a way to come together and say, we, the vote was approved, and as a council, we support this. And you can still have your no vote, but still professionally disagree and then move forward with a, with a project. And I think that is tough to do in government of any type, but...
If you're on the losing end of that vote, how do you then say, you know, I wasn't supportive, but this is the position of the organization that I represent, and so our body decided this is what we're doing and I'm, I'm going to support.
Well, and that's kind of the double-edged sword of, of values, going back to that whole larger topic, is that my definition of what I feel reliable is, might be different than Jeff's, especially if I vote differently than what he thought in a, a meeting, or, you know, a topic that comes, that comes before us. And, you know, you can, as a, as an elected official, you can, you can run on something or have a very strong opinion on a topic, like the bridge or whatever, but then when it comes down to it, if it's, if it's not the majority opinion of the council, or if it's not, uh, something that after you learn more about it, you change your mind and decide that that's not what's best for the community, to me, if you stand for that, that's, that's being reliable, or whatever title you want to put to it, but Jeff might think the opposite, like, well, you just completely flipped, so now that's not okay.
Yeah, conflict's an interesting space, right? Because a lot of times conflict is there because of lack of information. And so we make assumptions about things, we form our positions based on those assumptions, but then new information is always coming in. And so do we side, do we decide, well, I burned my ships over here on this shore, and so I will go no further, or are we responsive to the new information that comes along, right? And that's, that's a tough thing, that's a, there's an emotional imagination that goes on when we have to confront those kind of situations, right? But I think the values piece is how do we, how do we go through that process? And how do we go through that process as a group? Because there's going to be conflict, there's going to be disagreement, but what do we value as we work through that? Liz, you said it well, you know, professional respect and honesty, Sean talking about integrity, right? These are all important values as we do that. I'm going to flip the thinking here just a little bit. Some communities place value on, we want to be the lowest-cost provider, right? We want to have the lowest taxes in our jurisdiction. And so, you know, the services that are then provided are sort of not reliable, right? Because there's not robust investment in staffing and capital assets to deliver those services. Other jurisdictions are, we are going to be the premier provider, you know, and so they have higher taxes, they, you know, attract really talented employees, and everyone's sort of on that spectrum somewhere in the middle. But it's important, I think, for the governing body to understand what is it that we value in that respect as well, with, you know, those services? What's important to us as we put our budgets together, as we do our work as a council? So thinking about the quality of the service, the investments that are made, the, you know, attractiveness of the organization to talented staff to come and work here, those are all things that you think about as well, right? Because you send that message, and you set the tone for the whole organization in the policies that you pass and the budget. Other thoughts on values?
I just think it's important to remember that La Center is a small community, it's always going to be small, we're not ever going to be, compete with large cities, and try to attract some of the businesses that, you know, people want. It's just not who we are, you know? We're always going to be the safety net, in my opinion, of Clark County. We are, you know, if anybody's seen, oh gosh, what's that movie? The Truman Show?
Yeah.
I mean, it's an amazing show because it's just a very interesting, if you look at it from a poetic sense and not just from a movie sense, but, I mean, really, that's how I see La Center. You know, we are a community that thrives on families, good education, we're a community that, you know, people come here to raise their families, not live next to Costco. You know, we are here because we want that picket fence, we want to walk in a beautiful park and know at least 10 people we walk by, and maybe not one, but, you know, the other person that we just talked to knows them. You know, everybody knows everybody. And, you know, I think that that's when people who grew, grow up in big cities, you know, moving out somewhere like this is just not part, you know, that doesn't, they're, that's not used, they're not used to that in a sense, the same, because they're used to city life. But I think that when you grow out, grow up in communities and in the country, you realize, you know, that we are so special and unique, and we, we can really only offer a few things, you know? Safety, which is security through police force, good schools, good roads, you know, and having, you know, being respectful neighbors to one another, and, you know, looking out for each other's children, and everybody who's parenting everybody, it doesn't, you know? And I think that us just recognizing that we don't need to try to be something we're not.
Yeah, yeah, and a lot of communities identify some of the things you described as what they value, is they set their policy, right? We value small-town feel, family-friendly, good schools. Even though cities aren't in the business of schools, like Camas, in their, you know, mission, vision, values, they talk about their partnership with the schools. And it's always been integral to that community, you know, started out as a mill town eons ago, right? And the, the people that came to establish the mill wanted to have good schools for their kids to go to, and that benefited not just the people who ran the mill, but all the people working there.
Right, because it affects the people that are buying homes here. Why do people move here? They don't want to move here so they can drive 45 minutes to their job in Portland. They move here because they want their children to be in a completely different environment than maybe they had, or maybe, you know, just providing them more of a security, you know, getting them out of, you know, what a city provides. So, yeah, I think the schools are everything. And when you look at La Center schools, I mean, we couldn't ask for anything, you know, better, in my opinion. So we have great teachers who stay around for a long time, that's, you know, great evidence that, you know, they're, have leadership that they respect, and then it trickles to the city level. So I think it's foolish to think that you're not the business of schools, because property taxes, you are, because we're attracting people, you know, so.
Part of what draws people to community, for sure. Yeah, so any other thoughts on values? And this is not a closed book, by the way. It's not like, that's it, we're, you know, going to chisel what you say on stone tablets and it can never change. We'll, we'll continue to work on this. But think of the values as, you know, as policy matters come before us as a council, how do those policies fit within these values? I mean, we're talking about economic development or planning, comprehensive plan updates going to be coming up, and, you know, so small-town feel, how does, you know, how do our decisions fit with our values of having a small-town feel, right? As we do the downtown suburb area plans, ongoing project, right? Some of those things, well, how does this fit with our values, right? But being able to state that and articulate what those are is helpful, hold ourselves accountable, and message to everybody else what's important to us.
Yeah, well, and I'm seeing how closely related all of these four titles are, and you go... And you go back to what I said at the beginning of of the mission is, I I think Melissa was spot on. When you talk about what a bedroom community is, where people want to live versus where people have to work. And the the challenge is, how do you, how do you pay for that? And it comes back to those those boundaries, what are we, what do we have to work within? And then that's probably coming up in the next slide, which is strategy, how do you figure out how to do that?
All right, so we'll go on to next one here. It's a strategy statement of an organization sets the long term strategic direction and broad policy directions. Gives the organization a clear sense of direction and blueprint for the organization's organizations activities for the upcoming years. These are typically statements articulating the organization's principal strategic initiatives to be achieved in the five to 10 year timeframe. They connect the mission, vision, values into actionable prioritized directions embraced directives embraced by the organization. So. These could be things like. You know, if if we were talking years ago, one of the strategic objectives, strategic initiatives might have been. Getting sewer service out to the junction, right? Getting the force made done. And so there might have been some planning and work and partnerships or whatever it took to get that in place. So as you think about that, what are some? What are some strategic initiatives that you feel like might be important for the city over the next five to 10 years?
I I think. Balancing the budget is the. Probably the biggest challenge that we have. And then how how do you go about about doing that? You know, the what comes to mind is, you know, we're we're being told that there's there's a. A deficit year to year and the reserves are are dwindling as we go along. To me, anyway, the the budget that that we approved isn't necessarily real money. It's just planned for money and that can change as you go throughout the year. But what's difficult is if we want to attract development to. To try and increase our revenue within what we're allowed to collect revenue for. Because the city can't be a for profit company, it has to balance it, balance out and. But how do we come up with the funding to put in some of that basic infrastructure? So like you said, the the sewer and the and the streets and the things that a developer wouldn't necessarily be responsible for. But without it, we wouldn't have those developers coming in. And then just, like you said, it goes back to what what Melissa was talking about, about how when you have a place that people want to live. How do you, how do you pay for that and provide those those? Those services without having all the things come in that that make a community not so much of a dream community?
On the economic development side, you could have, you know, let's say a chip fab come to your community, right? And so. You gear up, you fund, go into debt to put in the infrastructure. And they come in and they build their fab and it is added to your property tax rolls. And all of a sudden you have this, you know, bevy of revenue coming in from that. You use that to pay yourself back for the infrastructure investments. Now you've got like thousands of employees coming into your city every day. So there's like a commensurate, oh, we've got to increase our level of service, right? Because we have, so balancing all that out and then going back to, well, does that fit with small town field value? Right? Do those actions fit in with that? So it's it's an intricate balancing act.
Well, sure, but La Center is unique because we kind of have two different worlds. We can have our economic development up there and we can have our little community down here.
Yeah.
We just have to, you know, in five, 10 years, obviously, I think we'd all like to see Timmins, you know, developed or obviously up at the junction. You know, obviously, those are companies, we're waiting on them and, you know, yeah, obviously, we want. We want to invite things that make sense and obviously our surrounding areas, we already have a hotel across the street. So to say no to a hotel over here, I mean, that's it's a little silly. But if there wasn't a hotel, I could see where people would maybe not think that was attractive. But at the same time, you pass in, you go down the hill to your little community and you don't have to see it. You have to walk out your door and look at it, it's helping make your community money up the road.
Yeah, well, and I think that's that's an important observation about the different character of the city. It's driven by geography and so on. But that you have these different fields and different areas of the city and how that fits into your values and what you do.
Yeah, because I think it'd make a big difference if we didn't have that distance. We'd feel differently about what was being built just right there, you know, but because it's far up there, it's like, well, you know.
Yeah.
Now we just want to make some money.
So any other thoughts on strategic initiatives? Balancing budget is a great one, you know, that's a year to year, put a spending plan together, forecast revenues. And hopefully it goes according to plan and balances out, right? And you can deliver the services and build the projects you need to based on that plan.
Yeah, that's okay. People are scared of debt, that is very healthy, normal.
As long as there's something coming in to service it, right?
All right, yeah. That's why you got to believe enough in the plan to know that the debt doesn't matter. That's why you bring it on.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you're going to make hopefully five times what you spent, you know, or whatever. Yeah.
So I'll move on here, I have a couple of examples. So I pulled one from Pacific Grove, California, and I'll show you Camas' they their, you know, mission, vision, values, strategy statements. So Pacific Grove. Here are their core values for their council leadership, inclusiveness, integrity, collaboration, stewardship. Let's see, mission statement is deliver quality, professional public services to all residents in the Pacific Grove community and the region while ensuring high value and quality results. So then they have some goals and strategies, they have a complete streets. So they're they're, you know, obviously it's something important to them is. Streets with sidewalks and bike lanes and, you know, that accommodate multiple users. Environmental stewardship. So they're looking at things like organic waste recycling. Tree planting. City asset stewardship, so repair, maintain, improve city assets, street sidewalks, sewer systems, buildings, parks and trails to better serve the community. Anticipate future needs and prevent further degradation. And as you think about, you know, the challenges that face cities, it's really two main things, right? It's population growth, right? And needing to increase the level of services to match population growth. And it's dealing with stuff that wears out and everything wears out, including people who work here, right? But how do you stay on top of all that? Transparency, accountability and communication.
Well, sorry, don't mean to cut you off, but also like, how do you keep those plans that you've created 10 years ago moving forward with a, maybe you have a completely new staff? You know, so it's like stuff that a city creates, you know, 10, 15 years from now, it might be. Waste if those people are not obviously furthering that mission.
Yeah, yeah, that's why there's got to be that buy in, right? With the community because you have a fixed existence on city council. You're, you have a term that you serve and you may or may not be back here after a term, right? And so for these plans, these visions to have staying power, there has to be that buy in with the community, you know? Lots of lots of organizations, companies that go through these exercises. You know, they'll come up with these plans and statements and the CEO is only there two or three years, right? But it's a five to 10 year goal, you know, their board members might change out. Their head of HR is only there four years or something like that, you know? So you have this turnover, so it's really got to be part of the culture of the organization, you know, in order to have that staying power.
And just along that same topic, I think that that. One aspect of succession planning that gets missed is the documentation of. What those goals were, what has been done to achieve them? And once that goal was completed, how did it, how did it get there? And and. My experience with. Grant funding and grant funded equipment is a huge issue. Because somebody will will take on that project and obtain it. And then that person moves on and then after two or three changes of the guard, you've got. Where did this trailer come from? How did we even get it and what do we do with it now that we don't need it anymore?
Yeah.
And and so it just seems like there's a lot of of that kind of thing in in government and the. The whole industry is is changing because we don't have the 30 year tenured employees in really any aspect of of public work anymore. The the. I mean, when I was growing up, my parents always, your dad always said, hey, get a get a county job, you'll be set forever. Well, that's not not the message that's being sent out anymore. And we're we're seeing that that even, well, especially in times of good economy, government work isn't. Attractive. And now that we're starting to enter into a recession and we're still seeing that government employment isn't necessarily that attractive to people. And not nearly as attractive as not working at all. And. We really have, we've had, we've been looking for wastewater. Treatment folks for a very long time and. Again, that all of this is so tied to together and we can't ignore that because going back to what Melissa said, it's. It's expensive to run a bedroom community and if. The city doesn't pay enough for somebody to live in the city and work for the city, then you're not going to get, you're not going to get the employees. So again, going back and then it gets reattached to the budget, so we have our work out for us, I think.
Yeah, yeah, it's. You you don't have easy issues to work on on city councils. You know, if you if you fully understand the issues, you understand they're very complex. There are all kinds of different facets to them and different things that influence how they might go, right?
But I think like one of the biggest challenges, like, how do you strategically like organize these things to like bring them to fruition? Like, how do you like? Put, you know, things in place like using the budget or whatever and, you know, the right people for the job? And then, you know, bringing that, you know, to a place where it can be developed and, you know? I, there's so much that goes into it. And you're dealing with, you know, all sorts of different people, personalities, you know? It could be like a geographic challenge, it could be, you know, a money challenge, it could be, you know? I don't know, just not enough personnel, whatever it is, but. There's got to be a way to have some sort of competitiveness to make all these things happen. And I guess where you start with all of that is kind of the big question.
Yeah, well, I I think probably the best place to start is for the council to identify what it is that's important to me, what that vision is. You know, if you say. You you recognize that these services, they're they're critical services. They, you know, help us have a safe, comfortable, livable community. And so to deliver those services, we need the best employees possible, we need the best leadership in place. And and so, you know, you tell staff, well, how do how do we get there? How do we be the premier employer so that we attract? The top talent, you know? And part of that's being an attractive place, there's that, oh, La Center is a place that I want to live, I want to work, I want to play. And that's a lot of, you know, community development stuff and planning and so on. But it's also compensation and it's, you know, what's the quality of the work environment? So are we understaffed and, you know, one person is running around all day filling 20 different roles? You know, so it's it's those kinds of things and so staff can look at the work environment and go, well, you know, we could, we could add people in public works. Or we could add people in administration or wherever it needs to be so that we can. Provide that better work environment, increase the level of service and so on. But it all starts with that vision from the council of what they want the organization to be. You know, going back to the earlier example, if if a city council says we want to be the cheapest, then that means they're probably not going to be. An attractive place to work, right? Because they're going to underpay the market, the work environment is going to be pretty strapped in terms of, you know, one person wearing 30 hats. So. Each step decide what what is it we value, what do we want to be? Yeah, so. Finish this up here, so the Pacific Grove transparency, accountability, accountability, communication, financial stability. Affordable housing is something that they identify facilitate local business recovery. So. See a date on this when they adopted, but I think it's fairly reasons a California town. I think they're probably referring to COVID, right? So helping local businesses recover from impacts of COVID. This is Camas' so Camas has their mission here. Miss Preserving Heritage, sustaining, enhancing high quality of life for all its citizens in developing the community to meet the challenges of the future. Their vision, Camas is great schools, hometown feel, great place to raise a family, integrated with outdoors, jobs to support our community, safe. Decision principles, providing services in line with community needs and priorities, maintaining or building financial sustainability for our city. Preserving our integration with the outdoors, creating an inclusive community that feels like a hometown. So these are the questions they ask themselves as different policy issues come to them. Values, service oriented, vision driven, partnering and collaboration, accountability, continuous improvement. So strategic priorities, meet community needs with optimal use of community resources. So then they have objectives for each of these strategic priorities. So process efficiencies, and you would see they're working on an update to this. And you would see in one of these areas, and I think, I think it probably falls under this one. They're doing a enterprise resource planning system replacement. So they have a system called Springbrook, which is like a Y2K kind of system that hasn't been invested in in a long time. It's hosted on site, so there's like two people that run it and and support it. And, you know, we're in this whole cybersecurity age where that might not be the best approach. And so they're moving towards a system called Tyler Technologies, which will be hosted in the cloud. And so any software updates are just included automatically done in the cloud. And and it's like a three year project that's going to cost them like three to four million bucks to get through. But they'll have a lot more visibility into their data and their finances. So those, that would be like a key strategic initiative or objective, that's an example of one, right? Build financial sustainability, they are double A plus in their bond rating, trying to get to triple A. So that's one of their key objectives or initiatives, so they have, you know, some. Initiatives that play into achieving the objective. Core infrastructure, so looking at infrastructure capacity, corrective maintenance, preventive maintenance. Condition assessment on all core infrastructure facilities, just this last year. They had a consultant come through and look at all their buildings as they exist now and want. And one, oh, well, you know, that electrical panel isn't up to code. The alarm panel doesn't work, the roof leaks, you know, identifying all these things and then costing it out and helping the city understand. Okay, we need to invest so many millions of dollars over the next five years just to take our existing facilities and, you know, preserve the integrity of them. Not those facilities necessarily meet the demands of today because they were built in the sixties, right? Some of them, City Hall was built in, I think, 67. But just to keep the water out of City Hall, you know, keep the ant population down and all that stuff. They've identified all these things. So we've got some transportation infrastructure, SR 500 corridor. And then managing growth, they prioritize jobs ready land. They have a huge priority around that. They have a lot of technology industries that locate over there and they want to continue to expand that sector. So they're always looking for opportunities there. But they've done a parks recreation open space plan update this last year. And they're working on transportation, capital facilities plans, so forth. So mission, vision, values, strategy. Mission, why we exist, vision, what we are striving to become, values, how we fulfill our mission. And strategy are those mid to longer term initiatives to move us towards that vision. So want to come back to discussing ideas around mission, vision, values and strategy and see if you have some additional thoughts on where, where the city needs to go, what the city needs to work on. And again, this is like an open book. So, you know, if you ruminate on this and have other ideas, there'll be other opportunities to pull that together. And I think maybe something you could do is. I'll try not to break what you think we're in. Don't want to get in trouble. So this is your mission statement. The mission of the City of La Center Council is to represent the public interest to the citizens of La Center, balancing the needs of our commercial and residential community and enhancing the quality of our park system and infrastructure through professional planning and maintenance. And Liz doesn't remember when this was devised.
I was just going to ask, when did that get written?
No, because that has nothing about safety in there, which I find interesting.
That word, does it say anything about small town?
I think it's too blurry.
Yeah. That's a little much, but.
I think we just.
With the hand right there, it's so awkward.
So probably, probably needs a little work, right?
Sounds like a project.
So we need to lead into this a little bit and think about, well, what do we want our mission statement? What, you know, it's our vision, what value report, what are our strategic initiatives? Additional thoughts?
Yeah, just stand there and hold it.
That's specifically for RIT.
Looks like a man did it.
Well, to me, this is kind of like, I, I guess when I picture it in my mind, it's kind of like that recycling picture where there's a, it's a circle with arrows and it just is, should be constantly revolving around. And everything should be adjusted every time you come around the circle.
It's, you know, being so, I've said before, cities are in the forever business, which means the way how we do things looks like whack a mole, right? Because you have that, you know, 100 year old sewer line out there in the street that breaks. And so now that's the top priority, right? You've got a new huge development that's going to come in. And so now that becomes a top priority. You know, there's some shift in the labor force, so we don't have enough people. So now that becomes a priority. And so it's just constantly moving from one thing to the next. And so you might like address some major issue. When I was, when I was in Battleground, one of the issues we had to work on was water capacity. As they have a well field. And the, the soils around Battleground have this mineral, iron manganese, that as you draw water up through the wells, this mineral blocks the screens in the wells. So you have to pull these screens out, clean them every other year. And they clog up the rocks. So the porosity in the rocks, it allows the water to come through as you create the pressure with the pumps. So what you see over time is you put in a well and it's really expensive to put in a well, but you see the productivity of that well drop off over time. Meanwhile, population going up, so demand's going up. And so we're working on.
So then what else happens? The price goes up.
Well, right.
And then it frustrates the constituents because they don't understand all that. You know, they just see their bill.
Yeah.
Look at Woodland complain right now. Oh, that place, I feel bad for them.
So Philip Johnson was the mayor. He was one of the mayors while I was there as a city manager. And we worked on with our public utilities. They're, they were starting to put in the Paradise Point well field up here. It was still a little ways off. And so we're looking at, okay, we're going to drop down below, you know, our capacity to add more. You know, like we were, we might have to put a development, building and development moratorium in place because we're not going to have enough water, you know? And so Paradise Point was still a ways off. And we were needing to figure out how do we fund an intertie and a line to bring water down to Battleground from there? So that's millions of dollars to do. But we worked with them because CPU has a line in 502 that comes in and ties into Battleground system.
Downwind to Lewisville at all?
Uh, I don't know. I don't know much about the system going up Lewisville. And, you know, there are some sort of satellite systems that aren't connected to the larger system. And like there were some inside the city limits that were just sort of these standalone things that CPU managed that were put in probably back under county jurisdiction, you know? So, but for the most of the city, they were served by the city well field. And then we had this intertie with Clark Public Utilities. So we worked and we worked and figured out, you know, how much money it's going to be. And it was exhausting. And finally, like Philip and I were talking one day and he's like, okay, so, so we got that done. And I said, yep, that, that'll get us through, I think about 2024, 2026, somewhere in there. He was like, what? Really? I'm like, well, yeah, you know, population's going to continue to grow and we're going to have to come back to that and figure out how do we get more water capacity to support population growth? So that's that whack a mole thing that we'll pick this thing up, work really hard on it, we'll set it down. But because of the dynamics of being a city, we're going to have to come back around to it at some point. So you don't get to rest. Right? So what are some other thoughts you have about strategic initiatives? Or what would you say some of our strategic initiatives are right now? And we can ask staff to chime in here too. What are some of the big initiatives that we're working on right now?
I think one of them, going sort of back to Casey's point about financial stability and then revenue sources, is the planning efforts that we're just beginning now for both Timon Landing and the downtown areas. We did the work a few years back on the junction area that I think once we've done these other two plans, we might want to return to and do a check in on that and any updates necessary too. Because that's obviously a key economic engine of the, the region. But, you know, looking out into the future and how we build various different sustainable revenue sources is, I think, a key item. Something else I've been thinking about here, so I'll just throw it on since I'm talking. You know, the, the first part of the mission statement there talks about representation and, you know, basically putting the community's visions forward is the duty of the council. And I think a lot of the strategic ideas that you guys have are needs that the communities express, but there may be other ones that are out there. So one thing I've seen implemented to pretty good success in other jurisdictions is like a community survey sort of thing where it's actually a statistically significant, you know, representation data that you get from the community. And that way you have a better sense of, okay, these actually issues that the whole community wants to see? Or is this just sort of the vocal minority or kind of helps you, you know, get a sense of that? There may be things that we don't even know about that are floating out there. And then to Sean's point earlier about how, you know, you don't know where to focus your efforts and what's going to have the most impact, that same sort of data can help get you that information. For example, you know, if, if they say, okay, well, there's a large public sentiment around public safety. You know, but you have, you know, limited funds to spread around. So where are those, you know, what are you going to be able to invest in that's going to have the most impact on the community? And so some sort of community survey like that might be valuable data to feed into this process as you guys are looking to update your mission values and strategies. And it could be done, you know, without a huge investment upfront, you know, it's maybe a.
Camis and Washougal do it every two to three years.
Yeah. And that's another good point is you can, you can do it periodically. You can track your progress and see if, you know, the, the work that you're putting in is paying off. Or maybe there's other, you know, to the whack a mole example, maybe there's new priorities that are rising that we need to shift focus on too. So.
I mean, like the police thing, we've driven that, nothing to the ground. I think at the end of the day, if we don't have, you know, the funds to do it ourselves and to be able to make that work. If I say, well, at the end of the day, our crime rates are low. We're in a safe place and we're still providing service to our people, even if with the limited resource we do have. It's not like we have this rampant crime and, oh, we're just, oh, sorry, we don't have anything and we're standing right here. That's not what we're doing, you know, even though some people might have that belief, that's not reality at all, you know?
So it may be that, you know, the survey would show that, you know, as long as you're able to provide that service.
Right.
Then the, the constituents are satisfied. You don't need to, you know, make a huge investment in that. You can make a moderate investment and have similar results.
Totally. Exactly. We're still able to like, basically instead of whacking the mole, you're just putting some gum right there for right now. And it's like, okay, well, it's, it's, yeah. We'll be back, but right now we're, yeah, exactly.
So the process Camis and Washougal use, I think there's a few other communities that use this same company in the area. And then they do lots of cities nationwide. So they have kind of a canned set of questions that they ask so that there's consistency. And the statistical significance is important because part of it is benchmarking your community against communities of similar size and features and so on. There is room to like ask, I think it's like two or three sort of specific questions to your jurisdiction if you're looking for some response from your community on something. And it's really about, you know, it's gauging people's perception of the quality of service that your community provides. And so in making decisions and setting priorities, that's an important data point to have. But also what your own experiences are and what you hear from constituents and what you hear from professional staff.
But we also deal with something that people didn't have to deal with, you know, five, 10 years ago, which is Facebook, you know, social media. So you get the, that belief system that's created in that reality. Even though people making comments about what happened at the casino, oh, and there was no police, oh, we need a police force. Like, if you really know what happened, there was like seven, you know, cars there. It's like, stop creating this, you know, narrative that, oh, there wasn't support or we need a police force. Yes, that would be nice, but if you come to meetings and educate yourself, you'll see that as a city, we're, you know, balancing this right now. And you can't just go so hard over here when really you're just, you're not looking at everything.
It becomes self fulfilling.
Right. And then how do you, that crowd, you know, and then it's like dealing with that. And yeah, so it's a different balancing system, I think, when you're asking those surveying questions and trying to really, you know, what's reality?
Yeah. I think you're exactly right. And a, a survey like that can either quash or validate some of the social media discussions that, that go on. Because, you know, it's, it's not uncommon for an issue to come up and it's perceived as, well, everybody's having this issue. And in reality, it's 10 people have the issue. It's not an everybody thing. I really liked what Brian was talking about with, with going out and trying to collect this information. But I think our challenge as a city is what, then what do we do with that? Because looking at this right now on its, on its face, now all of that is going to come to you. And at what point are you going to have time to deal with all of that, with all of your other, your other responsibilities that you have? And I think it kind of, like I said, this, it's a, it's a big ongoing circle. And I, I don't think that it's fair to ask staff to do more than what they're already doing. But how do we afford to provide more staff to address these issues? And, you know, I, I think that Camis and, and Washougal have.
One thing, sorry to interrupt you, but just kind of going off of that, like I kind of disagree slightly with the statement of just like expecting them to do more. I mean, you always have to leave room for improvement. I mean, it's not just to maintain. I mean, you can maintain something for so long, but eventually, you know, a roof, for example, like you can maintain it as much as you can to preserve it, but at some point you're going to have to replace it. Now, if you wanted to, like, when you get to replacement, upgrade it to the next, to a tin roof or whatever it was. That's going to give you much more sustainability in the long run. So to say that, you can expect them to do more, I guess, is like kind of, in my opinion, getting away from, you know, what we're trying to do. I think we're always trying to improve, not saying that this is not relevant to anybody. I'm just saying as, in a broad picture.
Let me see if I can clarify something though, because I think you might be talking about two different sides of the same coin. So I hear you talking about, you know, continuous improvement. So that's doing what we do and doing it a little better every day, right? And then I think what I hear you saying is something more of like the volume of work relative to the capacity to do the work.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah. And, you know, I, I think, I think Brian and Maria and everybody that we have, have an incredible capacity to, to do things. But once your division or your time gets divided and your attention division increases, then the quality of reaching those strategic plans, it just, it, it diminishes. And I think that an advantage that some of the other smaller cities have in this area is, is they have, they have a full-time city manager to help with that stuff. And, you know, it's, I am a fan of, of a, of a strong mayor community. But how do you expect a strong mayor that is working part-time for a few thousand dollars a year to be able to, no matter who it is, invest that much time in the, in the city? Versus if you invest in your city staff, whatever that may look like, whether it is a city manager or whether it is a, an assistant director of administrative services or an assistant public works director to spread out that work, when you reach those, when you set those goals and those strategic plans and then you send out those surveys and then now you have to act on that information. And that seems to be where a lot of places kind of fall apart too, is how do you, how do you make sure that you have adequate staffing to get these things done? You know, and, and again, that's the, that's the challenge of keeping the small town feel that, that we wanted is it's, it's nice to have elected officials that are community members. And, but then again, we have the other side of the coin, which is how do we, how do we hire executive level city staff and pay them enough to afford to live in our town when the expenses keep going up and up and up? And so it's, it's a double edged sword where it's, it's maintaining livability in a bedroom community and having that buy-in and, and, and investment on the part of city staff with, without, I mean, you still, you just have to pay for it. with, without, I mean, you still, you just have to pay for it. That's, that's all there is to it. You can't.
Yeah.
Nothing's cheap. And so I don't think we have that, that mission that you had spoke about, which is we want to be the least expensive.
Yeah, I don't agree with that at all.
Place to live in the, in the county, but
Yeah.
you know, we also want to price ourselves out of of everything, because then you just dwindle away.
No, yeah, yeah, you have to be able to
But you know, that capacity issue is a great point. You know, there's the improvement, getting better at what we do every day. You know, chief can eat two donuts an hour. If you came down and he said, I need you to start eating six donuts an hour. His stomach's still the same size, right? So it's probably not going to work. The capacity is not there to increase the volume.
What about diminishing returns?
I guess one thing I would add onto the survey discussion though, is, you know, that data can also be useful to help free up capacity because maybe we're spending a lot of time and effort on something that you know, the public already sees as being, you know, perfect. And okay, we, maybe we could refocus some of that energy somewhere else to somewhere where it would have more of an effect. So there's sort of a, you're right that it could come up with new, you know, items that take up staff time, but it could also come up with areas where maybe we can free up some staff time to focus on those areas.
Yes.
And, and again, back to the whack a mole point, you know, it's like, maybe we can, you know, we can see, okay, there's a, a growing issue here and we can whack it before it's fully popped up and, you know, you know, helps us be a little bit more ahead of the curve rather than being reactionary. So.
Yeah. Camas is kind of an interesting cautionary tale when it comes to the effect of public perception on the stability of the government entity. You know, the byline there is Camas is the city with the pool problem that almost drowned the city, right? So the Crown Park Pool, old, old, old facility. County Health Department shut it down several years ago because we, you'd see these pictures like leaking everywhere and it just needed a gazillion dollars in deferred maintenance, right?
This is an indoor pool facility?
It was outdoor.
Oh, outdoor.
Yeah.
But it has a ceiling?
No ceiling.
Oh, I thought you were describing, uh,
It was open.
Oh.
It's at Crown Park, which is, if you know where that is, it's up the hill from the downtown, right? And so the city decided, you know what, let's just demo the pool. Let's get it out of here. And there was backlash from the community because it's, you know, been a feature of the community for a long time. So they're getting all this feedback from the community on we want a pool. So they put together a, a plan to develop a pool. And heard from different constituent groups about, well, you know, we'd like some ball fields too. And wouldn't it be great if we had something like Vancouver has, the first Vancouver Centre, right? So this thing just grew and grew until they had a $78 million pool bond issue, you know, facilities, recreational facilities bond issue. And so they decided, it was kind of rushed, you know, you want to spend about a year on something like that with the community refining it. And they decided, you know what, let's just throw it on ballot and see what the people think. And so the community, and here's something I don't understand is being asked the question, right? Vote on it up or down. But they were so mad that they ran a ride-in candidate for mayor who launched his ride-in candidacy six weeks before the election and won. Barry McDonald.
Oh, that's awesome.
Right? And ran a couple of people off the council in that same election. And the pool bond itself failed by, uh, you know, 90% to 10%. It was huge. It was a head rubbing. And, you know, so there was this turmoil in the organization. Cause you know, Barry McDonald, bless his heart, he did the best he could, but he got in, he was, you know, he ran because he was mad about an issue and got in and then figured out, oh, this is a bigger job than I think I thought it was. There's more complexity to it than I thought there was. Yeah. And so, you know, two and a half years into his term, he's fighting with the council all the time. They're loggerheads. And so he quits. And the administrator that he had hired, because Pete Kell, the longtime administrator who'd been there through this whole pool bond thing, Barry let Pete go. And and then they went without an administrator for over a year. So he hired Jamal Fox out of Mayor Wheeler's office to be the new administrator. And eight months into Jamal being there, Jamal resigned. So they, they kind of went at the same time. And that's where, you know, Ellen Burton was councilor. She was the mayor pro temp. And so she was slid into the mayor's role. And they asked me to step in down there. So that's what I, part of what I've been doing the last year and a half is, is supporting them. But interesting thing is, is when I got there, I'm like, okay, well, you know, it's got to all be about recreational facilities around here. If that's what the issue is. But you walk through like there's a fire station that Camas operates out of because they operate the fire department. It's in Washego. And it backs up with sewer twice a year. So they get new flooring, new kitchen cabinets twice a year because there's this ductile, old ductile sewer pipe that's in the slab of the equipment bays that is so old, it's pitted and the building wasn't purpose-built to have four to six people living there 24/7. So the amount of sewage that they create, and if you get a good rainfall, it all backs up and you can park your vehicles there, but you can't live there. So they go around the corner to the Best Western and when a call comes in from Pressa, they go over to the station, jump in a fire engine or an ambulance and they roll out to the call. So, you know, there's stuff like that that's going on. There's a city hall that's built in 67 and needing to be replaced. And it's like, where's the disconnect here? The community doesn't see.
Well, I think it comes down to the loudest players. I mean, it comes down to the loudest constituents, just coming back to thinking about, you know, social media, the people that are always on social media, those are the ones that know, oh, look, there's a survey. Oh, let's go to this meeting. Oh, let's get, you know, our 20 friends. They, oh, we want a pool, we want this. Well, in the ballots, everyone who actually is paying for it, they're like, what is this? You know, because it's going to every home, not just them and their 20 friends. So that's the disconnect. It sounds like they, you had a strong pool of people, but what the, the entire community was like, no, right? And that's what it almost sounds like.
So that's where, you know, as a council, you have got to ask for and expect and be prepared to hear some very direct responses from your professional staff who live in these facilities every day and work in them and work in these systems and know where things aren't working. Right? So the community is going to have their opinion about, yeah, you know,
We've already seen that when we were
Streets are fine because my, the streets I drive on don't have any potholes, but you know, somebody else another side of town might have a different experience, but might not get surveyed in that process because it's random sampling, right? But your staff know that that street on the other side of town needs major repair.
Right.
Right? So it's balancing all that information to come up with and execute good policy. So something else has come up is form of government. And Sean and I had a conversation yesterday, had some questions about form of government. So essentially there are three types of forms of government allowed in statute in Washington state. There's a commissioner system, which is, you know, think Portland, right? Where you have city council members who are commissioners over bureaus. They're the executives over those bureaus. Washington no longer has any commissioner system cities. Shelton was the last one and they changed to council manager form of government a few years ago. And they hired Jeff Knighton from Ridgefield, who was their community development director as their first city manager. So commission system is kind of gone by the wayside. Council manager form of government. That's where you have a city council that they, there's kind of two variants here, right? One is that the community elects the mayor. And it can be like council seat number one is the mayor. And the other variant is the council chooses from among themselves who's going to serve as the mayor. And the mayor's role is not executive. It is the chair of the council, spokesperson for the city, that sort of thing. The chief executive is the city manager that those council members appoint. Right? So the professional management runs the organization the day to day, reports to the council. And so rather than, you know, council asking a mayor, an elected mayor about the administration of the government, they have a city manager who's hired unelected, right? And then there's strong mayor form. And the two cities in Clark County that have strong mayor form is here, Los Center and Camas. Right? The difference between here, I mean, obviously Camas is the second largest city in Clark County behind Vancouver. And I guess, you know, unincorporated Clark County is like fake city, right?
How many does Camas have?
Uh, they're like 27,000 people.
I was like Battleground, I know, it was like 22. I'm like, okay.
So they're, they're a little bit bigger than, than Battleground. They have the difference between th- these two cities, obviously the size and scale and so on. Different services that are provided. Camas does everything. We do a few things, right? But they have a professional city administrator. He sort of fills that role of city manager. But instead of being appointed by the council, is appointed by the mayor. Right? So that's the difference is the professional management exists and can exist in both types of the forms of government. Washego recently, they're the most recent one in the county to change from strong mayor form to council manager form of government. And Camas and Washego were actually proceeding down that path at the same time a few years ago. Man Henrickson, who was mayor of Camas back in the eighties. Doug Quinn, who was on the school board, is now a city administrator in, uh, in Camas. And I think there was one other person, the three of them worked on the Camas side with some folks from Washego. I think Molly Costin was involved in that on the Washego side. And they just explored this change in form of government. Washego went forward with their change. And ultimately, you know, their city administrator, David Scott, was appointed to be the city manager after their change in form of government. Camas decided not to proceed for it. And the reason was because there is a very wealthy constituent of Camas who did not want the form of government to change. He wanted to be able to, you know, have influence over who sat in the, in the mayor's spot. And so I think he went to a city council meeting and he told the city council if they proceeded with putting the question out to change form of government and put it on the ballot because it's a voted act, that he would use all of his resources to get them unelected. And so they decided Yeah, I mean, people can come and
Sure.
Do whatever, say whatever they want, right?
It's like blackmail though.
Yeah. So they still, in Camas, they're still talking about a changing form of government. The current mayor, Mayor Hogan, talks about this is one of the things he wants to begin discussing with the council. You know, this year, next year is to look at changing the form of government to a council manager form. So yeah, East Community approaches it for, you know, they do different things for different reasons. And yeah, so I wanted to just kind of, you know, Sean and I chatted about it. Casey, you brought it up and so wanted to open the conversation up on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it just, I mean, I, you know, appreciate what the mayor does do and whatnot and everything like that. But like, to have somebody to help organize this, all these visions and, you know, goals that we have is huge. You know, it's a huge undertaking. I think that's like what the biggest thing that I've learned about being on city council, there's a lot that goes on here. And nobody sees any of it, you know, and it's like, all you see is, you know, when you're, like you said, you get a pothole or whatever, you know, you don't notice what's going on in the background. And I think if we do want to be able to keep up, I mean, we're on the brink of Ridgefield now where, you know, Vancouver and all, everything's just creeping further and further north. And if we want to be able to, I mean, we don't have to be a big city, but we want to be able to
Capacity limits also is the other thing of it, not just because I don't want to be big.
Provide a, you know, a nice, you know, hometown feel or, you know, in a place to live where people can, you know, go buy a few groceries, you know, without having to run all the way into Vancouver or Ridgefield now at this point, you know? But I think having that city manager could be hugely beneficial for us to help, you know, organize all of that to get it to happen. Just maybe more direction, I guess. I don't know. This is something I, I thought is definitely worth exploring versus having a strong mayor form of government where, you know, you have one person overseeing everything, basically.
I think there's challenges to, to both forms. I, I think that you run a little bit of a risk giving that much, I guess, that much autonomy to a to somebody that's not necessarily as responsive to the public as a, as a mayor would be. I'm kind of curious what Liz's thoughts are, having sat in a number of positions here at the, at the city and you know, I, I, I want to echo what, what, what Sean said. This is, this is nothing to do with, with Mayor Thornton. I appreciate everything that he's done over the, over the years, but it's, it's becoming such a, a big job that looking to the future, I don't know how we could ever expect somebody to even want to run for that position when he's done, let alone get it and then be able to do a good job. And so I, I'd like to hear what, what you have to say, if anything.
Well, you know, I think Jeff has encapsulated all of the challenges each city faces as it grows. And we are at that juncture. And we will continue to face, you know, more and more challenges as, as we develop and grow going forward. And, you know, business development will bring its own higher level of demands on the community. And the increasing residential development that too, you know, will continue to add to more and more parks, trails and areas to mow and all of the work that the community needs. So I think perhaps while we may not be there to a point where we need to jump on the bandwagon and become a city manager ruled community at this particular juncture. I think in the future, we will certainly have to look at it. Because it does become, you know, one more headcount, one more and a high paying headcount. And we just aren't quite there yet with our, our financials and the ongoing revenue to keep us competitive, to keep a type and caliber of person that we want to find. And to manage all of the different things that come to the community as we grow. But I think what the mayor has been really adept at getting us to at this point is some much higher caliber individuals that you can ask direct questions now in a city council meeting and get direct answers right there. Whereas before, I'll tell you, we would be asking basic budgeting questions and be told, I don't know. I'll get you that. But when you continue to ask and ask and ask, you get that same question. You know, that leaves you with a lot of anxiety in terms of, well, we are not in the best hands if this is the level of, of staffing that we've got. So we are finally to a point where whatever the question is, we can get that information. And that to me is a huge breath of relief. And it took, takes a while in this environment to get there. And I think we'll continue to see that as, as a slow process, much slower than years, any of the years I've ever experienced trying to get the best caliber of staff. Regardless of whether it's municipal, private sector, you know, state, local government, we're all seeing it right down to, you know, restaurant level. Everyone's being impacted right now. I don't know how long that's going to go on. But the longer it does, the more difficult that will become for everybody. And, um, but I think continuing to learn about it, you know, the differences and the challenges behind, how to move into that type of government are certainly worthwhile so that everybody gets a better at, um. Just an understanding of, you know, what each form of government brings to a community and how best it would fit with the social makeup of the community and tie in to everything that we've talked about today. You know, what are your missions? What are your values? And are, you know, moving to that direction, would that fit with the community's values? You know, I would just have to take a gut pull right now and say that the community would find that one more abhorrent thing that would light up Facebook if we went down that path. You know? Because they don't understand it and they don't see where we, we see, you know, we were kind of there juggling all the new demands, but I, I don't think the community would see that.
Can't you have a mayor, mayor, strong council or whatever? And then also have a city manager as well? I mean, why do you have to choose? And I get that, like what he said, I mean, it makes sense, like a mayor is not paid enough to put in fifty hours a week, sixty hours a week, which the job needs, right?
Right, you hire a city administrator.
Okay, so but, oh, I see. So it'd be a city administrator, not a city manager. So a city manager wants to come in because they have power and they don't want to have a mayor necessarily. They want to be, I, I'm not talking about, I just mean like, how do you hire a city manager and say, oh, you, you're going to come to a community that is where you're in charge? You're not going to have a mayor kind of every time you have a new idea, oh, sorry, can't do that. Oh, sorry, can't do that, right? Nobody wants, they want to come in and be able to facilitate the change that they want, right?
There's some, uh, there's some nuances to it, you know, just speaking from experience. You know, an election can change the whole picture for who you work for if you're in a manager administrator position. If you're an administrator, then, you know, change in mayor, as Camas experienced with Pete Capell. He was public works director at the county for a long time and then was city administrator at Camas. And he was there quite a while. And a little turmoil in the community and someone who was a, a very dedicated public servant was out of work, you know? So that's, that's kind of tough. Camas, uh, has struggled to recruit someone to fill that administrator role. Went through a round in May, four finalists and didn't have a preferred candidate emerge. We had a round in September with two finalists. We had three, but one dropped out before we conducted the final part of the process. And, uh, made an offer to, uh, to one of those finalists. But he had a competing offer from the city of Shoreline up in Seattle area. And, uh, so in weighing the two opportunities, he went, well, Camas is a city administrator role, Shoreline is a city manager role. And so he found that role to be more attractive.
Sure, because he had a little bit more.
More, yeah, it's different.
Decision making.
Different scope or responsibilities.
Sure.
I think the compensation was a little bit more too, but not that much more. So then recently, Mayor, Mayor Hogan just appointed Doug Quinn, who had been a participant in that last process.
Was there a history of, um, struggle that in Shoreline as there has been with the city of Camas in terms of their political makeup?
Uh, not, I, I looked up there to see what their headlines are.
They were looking for a police chief at around the same time. So I would imagine there was something going on in there.
They've been, you know, there's some sound transit issues that have been, um, kind of controversial in that community. But they're not like, uh, gosh, what's the, what's that other city up there that Mill Creek? Right? Mill Creek has been going through a police chief and a city manager about every other year, right? So just a little reflection about, you know, I, I worked my whole career in private sector until almost ten years ago. And my first job, I was hired, so I did heavy industry operations, transportation and logistics. And so I knew about railroading and, you know, marine ship loading and barging and all that kind of stuff, right? And production operations in steel manufacturing business. And, uh, so this job came up at Clark County to run the Clark County Railroad. And so I put in for it and I was hired. Uh, and a couple of weeks, I had, you know, I had always worked in Portland. So I didn't pay attention at all to what was going on in government in Clark County. Because I was always, you know, getting early in the morning, going over the bridge, working late, coming home. Didn't have time to pay attention to what was going on in my own community, right? Boy, have I learned, right? And so I started at the county in twenty thirteen, in July of twenty thirteen. And, uh, and what was going on then? Well, they were commissioner form of government and they had had, there was an election the year prior, twenty twelve. And there was a change in the makeup of the three member commission. And some decisions were made that were controversial. Hiring of a department head at the county that was very controversial. And Bill Barron, who had served for seventeen years, this county administrator? Okay, I think he was hired in the mid nineties or something like that. So, so Bill, who was a highly respected public servant in the, you know, professional city county management in that profession. He decided, okay, I've had enough, I'm going to retire. And, uh, so a couple of weeks before he left, I started to get pulled into policy work in the commissioner's office on land use and transportation, because I'd done a little bit of that in private industry before. And, uh, so Bill took me and another policy person out to lunch, you know, kind of giving us a little advice because we were, you know, the wet behind the ears people around the office. And one of the things I'll never forget that he said is we get the government we deserve. And that, you know, each passing year, uh, my experience has been like, oh yeah, it doesn't matter what the form of government is. Because if the people working in the form of government lack integrity, lack professional respect, honesty, they're not unified, they don't know how to deal with conflict. It doesn't matter what the form of government is. It's not going to go well, right? So, you know, I've been in council manager form of government. And that was a rough go because of the community and the culture in the community and what was going on between the council staff and the community. And it's still rough in that community, you know, they still have their conflagrations. Obviously, you know, Camas has a strong mayor form, they've had their turmoil. So these aren't perfect systems of government. It's not like you choose this one and you chose wrong. But you have to just kind of decide, you know, do you want professional management that's, you know, basically a CEO that's reporting to a board that's a city council? Or do you want a CEO that's elected? And the professional management reports to that CEO? So they're more like a chief operating officer, chief administrative officer over the organization, working for the mayor. You know, there are just different nuances in there.
I think the important thing to know is like a mayor is, how long is it served, four?
Four years, four year term.
Yeah. You know, you can still fire a city manager, right? I think that's the resistance of like, well, we want to vote our people in. You know, we want to say who's, you know, we want to have a say who the city manager is, not just the council, the people, right? But they don't really get a choice in that sense. So I think that it's important to remember like, where's those checks and balances with the city and how they approach it to say, you know, these are the, you know, requirements of this job are going to, and if they're not upheld, like we will take action. And this person will not be in this position if they're not holding to these visions and, you know, all the things that we're talking about.
Right, the voice of the people in the, in the strong mayor form.
It's not like that old, you know, that teacher that's been there for ten years and everybody's complaining. It's like, wow, it's a union, we can't really do anything, they're stuck there and you're just, you got to deal with it. You know, that's what I don't want to have to see and I don't think in this way, it's not built that way, right? Like they can just.
Majority, majority vote of the council changes the, and, and so, you know, the county, back to Bill Barron. With all that was going on, there was a group that started, hey, let's change the form of government in the county, right? And so they went from commissioner form to council manager form. And there have been some discussions over the years, well, should we change that county manager role to an elected executive? So I, I was hired to facilitate the last charter review commission. And one of the things they kind of talked about was maybe we should consider having an elected executive position instead of a hired county manager position.
That's kind of what I was just thinking, yeah.
And they decided, no, we don't want to do that. That's like the strong mayor form.
Right, right, right. I mean, I think it's different because a mayor, you can't expect them to work fifty six, I mean, there's no, there's, the expectation is not there. It's not the same, but somebody like that, it's like, you have a job to do. And then there's a lot of accountability when you're paying that person, what, what do they, what's their going rate? Hundred and fif, hundred and sixty a year?
A city manager administrator total compensation package is typically two to three hundred thousand a year.
Jeez, what are they, pilots? My gosh. Woo, okay.
It's scarce. Yeah, they're hard to find a good one. It's, it's hard to find a good one, right? So the offer that Camas made to, uh, the guy who took the job in Shoreline, total comp package was over three hundred thousand. You know, when you take retirement, so with salary, which is around two hundred and five.
Right, but you have to, that's what the city pays, right? And that's what we have to consider, exactly.
Yeah, so, uh. Yeah, yeah. You know, Ridgefield, I think, I have to look, but I think Steve Stewart's paid comparably fairly close to what. Okay, and Ridgefield's population is seventeen thousand or sixteen?
But they also have, you know, projects in the pipeline that are going to pay for all that, you know, that cost though.
Yeah, they're a very growing city.
Coming to go, so it's like, at least they can anticipate that they can keep paying that guy. Oh, sure, sure. Well, it's good for him, yeah, I would think so, yeah, yeah. Yeah, they can sustain, yeah.
That's, that's kind of my whole point behind this. Ten, fifteen years ago, if you look at Ridgefield and what it was then, like you said, it's very similar to what our community is, even though we've grown exponentially since then. But I guess my idea behind it is somebody that's going to have that mission with what Ridgefield has going on. You know, they start off like us, start having all this boom and, you know, residential growth. Now they're bringing in, you know, grocery stores and restaurants and businesses. You know, whatnot, not saying that that's going to be the center, but like, we have to prepare for that. And, you know, I feel like there's going to be some sort of tidal wave of something that hits us or it could just go right by us and we never even know. But it's facing us, in my opinion, and it's something that, you know, I feel like we, we I shouldn't, I don't know how to word this. I, I just want to be prepared, you know? And I want, you know, everybody to, we, everybody has kind of a similar vision of what they expect the center to be. But how do we facilitate that?
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, one of the nuances to the quality of the executive leadership of the organization, right? So in council manager, I think one of the virtues of that form of government is it's more stable in that respect. Where, you know, really, if you think about it, you're really fortunate with Mayor Thornton. You have somebody that has the business experience and acumen that he has. And, you know, so his exposure over his career of, you know, dealing with human resources and dealing with finance and everything else, right? You know, in an election, it's one or the other, right? And you could have two lower quality candidates. And, and Mayor Thornton's also been able to dedicate, because of the stage of life that he's at, a lot of his time to the city. Camas has been fortunate in that as well. Mayor Hogan's retired, uh, Mayor Burton was retired, uh, Mayor McDonald was not. So he was trying to balance working full time as a risk manager for a cosmetics company with his, you know, six, six weeks prior to the election, I think I'll go be the mayor of my city.
Right, and that's what I was just going to get at, like, I mean, I've been a business owner for thirteen years. And if, if I, at year four, someone said, okay, you ha, you don't get to be here anymore. You're not the, you're not the founder, you need to remove yourself and we're replacing you, everything stays the same. And expect my business to grow at twenty percent that it grows every year? That wouldn't have happened, right? So, so now it's like, okay, a city manager, I can plan for five, ten years down the road. I can take my business and scale it because I know I'm going to be here, right? And I think that that, that adds enormous amount of power when I look at it from that point of view. It's like, if somebody was to remove me and then what? You know, that, that's not, you're going to have a lot of, you know, stale growth, you know, stale growth, stagnation, possibly, you know, reduction and.
So I think, you know, the overall comparing the two forms of government, um, the city manager form provides more stability at that executive level than the strong mayor form. However, there are plenty of examples like Mill Creek where it does not, you know, because of the people who are on council.
Sure.
Right? So, uh, interesting discussion and lots to think about, but that might be, uh, something in terms of strategic initiatives that this council wants to think about is maybe we should talk about form of government. And, um, you know, there are some resources that can come in like in Waschugle and Camas and help to lead some conversations about what that might look like in this community and help you all get up to speed on what the different things you can think about in that decision.
I think we'd have to go forward at first. Well, it's almost exactly what I was going to say is, is I, I think there's a lot of hidden expenses in doing that. And some of the things that I would want to look at is what does it cost to do a recruitment? And there's a ton of examples everywhere around, so we would have an idea. I think something that's often overlooked is you can look at what the compensation package is for, say, like Camas or, or even the city of Vancouver. And it's easy to say, well, we're such a, we're such a tiny town. Our, our compensation package doesn't need to be what, what theirs is, but you're also not going to get a highly qualified candidate unless you're comparable in wages to that local, um.
Right, the market.
To that local job market. And the, you know, whether it's a, a city manager or a police chief or any other executive position, you get what you pay for. And, um, one of the things that I think you see quite often, especially in, in police chief recruitments is, yeah, there's people that are willing to take a, a lower paying job, but what do you get? You get somebody that is never been a chief before. You get somebody that, um, is looking to gain some experience so they can move on to somewhere else. And then you have somebody that stays for maybe five years. You know, even the city of Vancouver has that, has had that issue historically where they pay extremely well. But, you know, prior to Chief McElveen, they didn't have anybody that stayed more than five years before they moved on to a, a bigger city. You know, and then they didn't necessarily make more money going anywhere else, but they were gaining experience. And I think they see the same thing in, in city manager jobs. You get somebody that works for a, a small city, you know? Ridgefield has been able to keep Steve Stewart because they pay him well enough to make it worth staying.
Vancouver with Eric Holmes, yeah. It's, it, the typical shelf life of a city manager is about two to three years.
Really?
Five is kind of, yeah. Five is a long period.
I would much like to think that, yeah.
I think that's the second, like, where we've educated of all of this.
Yeah, I would never, yeah, I would, I, it, yeah, that's just surprising, I guess. Because, well, but in their position, like you said, like a lot, some industry, I mean, they, they know their worth. They know they can go anywhere and their value is, is so much different than it used to be.
Well, and correct me if I'm wrong, but.
That's why we have to do the, you know, grant these raises and give them, because like, we don't, you know, you guys leave, what do we have? It's like, we're going to be.
There's a lot of, a lot of times people will, will work their way. There's a lot of, a lot of times people will, will work their way up through the public sector, get to a certain point in their career where they can retire, collect their, 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 their public pension, and then become a consultant and make significantly more money than you could ever make in the public sector.
Or go to another state and, you know.
And do the same thing and collect another retirement.
Somebody over there went and worked in California for a long time and then came to Washington. So there are the state.
And I'm not criticizing that at all. I think that's good for everybody that, that has the initiative to, to do that because it's also too easy to get comfortable in a position and just stay there. And if that makes you happy, that makes you happy.
Advancing and, and gaining different perspectives and, and job skills that carry you to that next career path.
Where it's a problem for cities like us is, how do you pay somebody and keep somebody when it costs a hundred thousand dollars to do a, a recruitment? And I'm just guessing, I don't really know what it costs to do a recruitment.
It costs, it's about twenty to thirty to do recruitment, yeah. Um, you know, there's a, a tenet in management theory that also, you know, in thinking about chief executive roles, typically five years, right around five years is kind of the, the mark of, of somebody's. Because it, it requires such a high output of energy for the individual in the role. And they have, oh, you know, the, they're having a lot of impact over a brief period of time. Typically, they last about five years and they move on to another role.
They have to be instantly replaced, right? They can't just be like, it's not like a business coach you bring on for a year or two to help implement, you know, processes and then, okay, we can handle it on our own for a few years.
Yeah, I mean, private, private sector, they have interim CEOs and while the board conducts a CEO search, um, you know, cities have interim managers, administrators.
One of the, one of the issues that government has along those lines is that you can't have two people occupying the same position. So if you know somebody's going to retire, you might be able to start a recruitment, but you can't have somebody come in and, and act in that capacity and have that training period to have that changeover. So you do end up with the, someone in an acting role and, and taking up two government jobs instead of. Because you can have one person do two or three jobs, but you can't have two people doing one job.
Yeah, interesting.
Yeah. And I think, you know, interestingly, there's statute that allows for a city manager to be city manager in more than one city if the cities agree to it. So I think, you know, Eastern Washington, some of the smaller cities, you might have, you know, somebody who's a city manager in, you know, Omak and Othello, right? So they just split their time between the two.
Sure, when the population's twenty-five hundred, yeah, makes sense. Because they can't, once they can't afford to pay that person everything they need, right? So they dip between two.
So any, any other thoughts on this? Um, any other kind of big strategy initiatives, thoughts that you have? Why don't we take about a five-minute break? Use restroom, I know I need to, and, uh, and then we'll continue on and we'll move on to. Economic development is our next one.
You have a fever?
No, it's freezing in here.
If you get me sick, I'm gonna be mad. I'm gonna be mad.
It's cold in here every time I move in. And I hope I stop grabbing you soon.
Maybe nards are my favorite thing on night. Quarterback quarters. Those yours, those are your favorite? God, they're so good.
Happy I saw Facebook all the bio of all your fan staff.
Yeah.
Good, yeah, that's good. Almost like you had a good bunch of people.
Yeah. So I moved out to the drug task force.
Oh, yeah?
So.
Is that why you got a beard now? Exactly. You're gonna be, you're like, you're like Don Johnson in Miami Vice. See, I never, I, it's the one thing I never worked in my career, and that's really only anyone. I don't have the pull factor to be a narc. You know, like, kind of, it's not me, man. I go up here, I go over there, hey, man, give me some, oh, your cops.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we don't do a lot of that anymore. Mostly just sitting in a parking lot looking like a creeper.
I do remember, God, this is, I, we worked, I worked the crime, uh, like a crime suppression team. We used to, we'd always work with the narcs detectives. I remember a long time, this narc guy, we were driving down Carther Boulevard next to Johnland Airport with all the skyscrapers and we were in a two-eighty Z with the teetop top, playing the Miami Vice song.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, God.
Yeah, no, so I have that in major crimes.
Well, it's good for you, it's good for you. That'll be fun, that'll be fun, I think that, that kind of stuff. And that's, and I keep telling, that's what the county needs to start regionalizing and stuff, because these little cities, you can't, even now, we're, they're talking about. Can't even have a county, I mean, the county, this is gonna seem good, new, you know? Because it's always out of the city.
Well, we're so, Vancouver pulled out of D C last year.
Yeah.
And I think, I think Jeff will put somebody else back in there once it gets things.
You're welcome.
We're, one of the priorities that I have for this first six months is trying to get either a battleground or somebody to, to throw some bodies into.
And it's like everybody else, they're going, you know, now, Bound Run might be able to get there, but some, you know, like Ridgefield can't or, or, because we're, we're trying to step control slots like everybody else, right?
Well, I wanna, I wanna get Adam involved too, so.
That would be great.
I know John is very interested in doing that, he's just, right now, he's gotta balance, okay, can we afford to send a body there? And then what's the, but what's the, what's the response gonna look like once that hotel is built?
I think.
We might have to put a, two or three cops in, just in the building.
Well, I mean, but I think, but I think that it's a trade-off because you have to look at the big picture. Where are they, where are the drug dealers gonna be taken? We're gonna be parking lot casino. Because that's in, so with that hotel and stuff, we're gonna draw a traveling, so it makes sense to have somebody on that task force.
Well, and, you know, our, one of our big priorities right now, and I'm going to the, you know, two weeks, I'm going to Lemonworth for that HIDE, little HIDE meeting and try to get some funding to work the technical overdose. Sorry, the homicide cases and, the guys have already worked a couple of those.
I think, I think, yeah, see, when I was a student, I, I was lucky when I was in the army, I was an investment area. I don't know if they still have it, but I went through, they used to have two D E A school where you go training for D E A, so I went through all that. Up in Eugene, Oregon, and we went out for a day and did the rolling surveillance and stuff. But, had to change topics, but another thing I noticed was that issue right here.
Oh, yeah.
We worked, because I, so I have my chiropractor in there too, so, got a grab, get my Old Town Burger, next morning, they go to the massage.
I always have tried to work on the, on the, yeah, there's three or four. Anything that they wanted to get, ones I was to charge on was like, uh, what was it? It was like practicing on the massage devil and then something like that.
So we had to see Paul in Irvine, so I was gonna talk to Mike. So yeah, when I, when I started in Irvine, we had a bunch, it was Christian, you know, you're supposed to get all the.
It's crazy.
Slime cars are on the airport, as they're flying. So we passed the school, we went and we did inspection. I have a license, I have a, I have a, I have a towel service. So we put so many restrictions on them. And I wonder if that's gonna be, because we need, we need to get everybody on board, because if we don't, then it just pisses everybody off. And it's just, I mean, in this place, it's not even, it's not lights, exotic girls, it's not even.
They're not hired.
No, no, it's not. It's just, it's very sad. Because you need, the time pressure, because.
No way, yeah, that's bad. Oh, my God, how's, well, gosh, I. So I have to have my children with me, oh, yeah, you, if they was cool, they would. Oh, they, yeah, I know, I know. Yeah, but I know, I'm like, you know, did you, I'm legit and say you're following me, like, I would have. But they don't listen, okay, he's gonna drive, oh, he probably doesn't know.
I was impressed though when he came up, like, he kind of, he was just like, kind of came up with a.
Yeah, totally.
So you're gonna get called out, you're gonna be like.
Yeah, I did a forty-hour shift. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Came in, went in yesterday and got cleaned up, uh, pretty early.
Yeah, my power was out up in Summer Hills.
Oh.
Twelve to fifteen hours.
Yeah.
And then, and, and then before the power went out, I had, it was, uh, it was like an on and off, on and off, on and off.
Right on, seventeen years.
I think it blew my second prick with my water heater, then I looked at my water heater.
It's, uh, it's like, oh, yeah, too many accidents. So like, what, we're just doing it on. These are falling on us. Yeah, it'll short out. Get another shop. And like, it'll do it so many times, it's a power stop, we usually heard that station, so it'll be like one, uh, you know, you'll get that. Two, five, three, when it locks out.
Oh, yeah, that's right, I mean, going down to the office.
We were able to like, take care of it pretty quick for, wouldn't believe that's on a bristle.
Three or four people got killed in one, on twenty-six, going to the coast and the trees fell on the coast.
Like giant lids just crashing off, like it was in war zone.
Even in, we had ice cars here, we had people sliding backwards, we have a video, his truck is parked, slides backwards and hits it. And he comes up and he starts trying to report cars going, and no, the car wasn't still, but people out there driving on roads. And then, and then they get actually the same ball, share across. They're luckily leaving him with a gun one day, but he's a shooter.
Yeah.
I mean, you can't drive, we don't have anything magic that gets us there, once, once the streets are icy, it's like.
So McCarthy got elected speaker. But you basically got a position as a speaker into something that's probably, prior speakers would say is not recognized.
You just see this car like, slide right, coming up to the road. And then, just go, whoop. It's like, yeah.
Dude, I think it's a clue, this is gonna be an interesting ride.
Yeah. What was that? What was that?
Yeah, I used to work in physical competition, did you see that?
I did, you know what it was? I saw a couple of reports that said, there was a.
Line back up here.
Where's your hammer? You need the hammer.
Yaddle. Wrapping knuckles.
We're gonna get started again, gang? All right.
All right, so, um, just to wrap up that last piece for today on mission, vision, values, strategy, um, I think what I'll do is I'll put my notes together. Um, I imagine you'll want to continue having some conversation around that and work to update mission statement. So do some more work on that, maybe we can have a workshop and touch it up.
Maybe we can each put our thoughts together and add them to a reply to you and.
Do okay.
Keep building things from there.
That sounds good. So, um, I'm working off of a list that we made at our last, um, retreat. So September, we, we came up with a few things we wanted to talk about. And so the next couple of items come off of that. Uh, one of the items that I would like to put together is a meeting with the council and the, um, reps from the twentieth legislative district. So, uh, we'll get our state senator and our two reps either here or.
Are you hosting?
Meet them someplace.
I was gonna say, who's hosting, we mean, huh?
Well, we, we could do something here, you know, at, at dinner or something. Bring some food in and, and just get together and meet with them and talk about legislative session and what, you know, what's important to us and that kind of thing.
We should meet at Michael Jordan's. Hey, that's business networking.
So on economic development, just putting a few things together to kind of tick off discussion here. So the county comprehensive plan update is starting to kick off here this year. The last one was adopted in twenty sixteen, so about every nine years, eight to nine years, you adopt a new comprehensive plan, updates your population numbers and your job forecasts. And so this year, uh, the majority of the work will go into doing that population growth forecasting for the next twenty years. And, um, looking at, do we have enough land for housing and enough land for employment? Right, so the county leads that, all the cities participate. And so over the course of the next couple of years, we'll be talking about our urban growth area and do we have enough land in our urban growth area and how much, you know, population growth share, how that's gonna be spread around the counties, in the cities in particular, right? Uh, so adoption would be, I think by July, by the end of June of twenty twenty-five, the county has to adopt an updated comprehensive plan in the county and all the cities, right? So that's kind of the target there. So talk about, uh, downtown Timman Landing Suburban Plan, Plan Action Area. I know you had a presentation back in October and I've got a couple of the slides from that, just to kind of refresh on that. Uh, talk a little bit about, uh, activity up at the Center Junction and then about the tribal relationship. So.
Can I ask a question here, bro?
Yes.
Real quick, so.
Real quick, so um, it was interesting going to the legislative update. The breakfast, it wasn't a breakfast at all. Uh, but it was interesting going to that and listening to the legislators speak on on very high level topics. And it's stuff that's important to obviously the our community, but the greater Clark County community as well. But I guess where I would like some advice and some some direction or discussions is how do you, how do you balance short term and long term goals? Um, you know, I, one of the topics that came up was a, and you see it over and over again and and the public hears that, oh, there's a lot of support for a um, regional police academy in southwest Washington, um, which is an amazing development, especially since as long as I've been in law enforcement, CJTC has been, the Training Commission has been very controlling of of their their programs, right? You have to come to our location and do our, you know, they they would let i- individual agencies have very little, little control. So it's an amazing development to have them say, we're, we're willing to start looking at at regional academies and spreading that availability across the state. But the reality is it's five, six years out from being a, an actual reality where we can have people sitting in seats in southwest Washington.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's great to hear that whole thing, but there's a need for academy spots right now. So if you take that one topic and kind of spread it into uh, a, a general government umbrella, you know, just this plan is gonna take two years to develop. And yet we have needs that need to be taken care of next week. You know, at the latest, and there's things that should have been done weeks, months and years ago. Um, so I guess when it comes to this, how do we deal with, how do we deal with that? How do we prioritize those, those topics? Where do you, how do we come up with the funding to deal with things now, but yet make sure there's enough to to take care of those longer term goals? And and I'm not looking for an answer right now, but that's, you know, in an instant gratification society, it's kind of hard to to think, we're gonna take two years to make a plan for the next twenty?
Yeah.
Am I gonna be around that long? Who knows?
Well, you you exist, so it's like it's a rolling plan, right? So the plan that we have in place right now, Comp Plan, is it forecasts out to twenty thirty five. So it's that twenty fifteen to twenty thirty five period of time is what it was planning for. And so now, you know, you sort of mid-cycle in that plan, have an opportunity to true it up and look at what have our growth patterns actually been versus what the forecast was, right? So over the next two years, we continue to live and breathe under the existing twenty thirty five plan. But, you know, we'll do one that'll be a twenty forty four plan, right? Twenty forty four, twenty forty five plan will be the next one. And so we're just forecasting out that much longer and it's because it takes so long. And if you think about, you know, we've got some bare land on the periphery of our city that's developed. Except it's not inside an urban growth area. So under state law, it can't urbanize. It can't develop at a higher intensity than the rural characteristic that it is now, right? So we decide, well, in twenty years, we're gonna need housing. We're gonna have additional population, we're gonna need land for housing. So we need to bring that parcel land in, right? So first, you go through this process that justifies doing so, you know, demonstrates rigorously the need through the population growth forecasting. Then you have to do what's the environmental impact of bringing that land in to an urban growth area, right? It's all part of the comprehensive planning process. And then once it's in, right, it'll be in an urban growth area, but not in a city. It can start to urbanize, but it can't develop until municipal services are there, water, sewer, streets and so forth, right? And that takes time to get that infrastructure in. And then at some point, you know, you, it'll either fully develop and stay in the urban growth area, but not in the city, or the city will annex it in, right? So it just takes a lot of years to get there.
Well, and it was interesting listening to them speak and at their, at the level that they work at the state and and for the local communities, it's, you know, they have, there's now problems and there's future problems. And it's hard for, I think, the general public to really see the difference with the, in, you know, between those two things. And most problems are are both, you know, if you talk about homelessness, it's, that's a, that's a right now problem, but then that's also a long term problem. And, you know, as, as you get, the state umbrella is, well, we need to find long term solutions. And then it kind of goes down and then when you get to a, a city council, obviously we have to think about those long term solutions, but we're the ones that are gonna be getting the phone calls and and Brian and Maria and the chief of like, there, here's a problem right now that needs to be.
Yeah.
Resolved. So again, I'm not looking for an answer right now, but I think that's, that's something that's interesting to see. And and if we do get to a chance to talk to the, the state level administrators, how, how do they prioritize those things and how do they, they deal with that issue of, of solving long term and?
Yeah. Well, they're, they're citizen legislators, just like you all are. They just happen to represent a larger geographic area than what you do, right? Um, but same kind of approach. Where do they get their information from? How do they decide what policies should be acted on before others, right? What?
Making sure that they get all the information that they need to make those decisions to. And I think that gets back to us when we interact with them and let them know from each community's perspective, um, what the underlying critical issues are that they should keep in mind when they're making that overarching legislation to address the issue, fund the issue and lay out the, their vision and plan as to how the funds that they're trying to get approved at the state or the national level for that issue. You know, how, how do we address all those underlying needs?
Well, and that's where I think those surveys that we were talking about earlier could come in to play and be really valuable.
Can be helpful, yeah. Like the CJTC issue, right? You know, this problem's still gonna be here next year and the year after and probably the year after that. And so we have to do other things to adjust, to try to mitigate the effects of that problem and maintain our level of service while this works its thing out. And by the way, just side note on that, you know, all the cities support a CJTC facility down here. But what we don't want is we don't, you know, and forgive the um, lack of heartfulness of this term, but we don't want the governor to put that turd in our pocket, right? Because it's one thing though, here's a one time infusion of cash to build a facility, but it's a whole nother thing to staff it and operate it and maintain it.
Yeah. Which is why they finally decided that maybe regional academies are a good idea.
Whoa, this would be great. You know, we don't have to worry about this anymore.
It's a trap.
Right.
Or it could be a trap.
It could be because, you know, just because they're giving you this facility down here, um, it doesn't mean you're gonna get the revenue to operate it, right? And you're not getting any new revenue.
That was put together by, and then all the mayor signed, addressing all of those issues.
Yeah.
Um, it went to the legislators. You know, while we're supporting, and this, these are the critical issues that need to be factored into decision making at that level.
Yeah. So enough about turds in pockets. Um, so that's, that's the comp plan. That's, process is gonna be going on, so you're gonna be hearing more about that. Um, I imagine that'll either be through Brian, myself, or Ethan, or maybe all three of us.
Yeah, probably a combination. I think we're planning on doing a joint council and planning commission session like in early February to kind of give an overview of what that process looks like, the timelines, the steps. There's a lot of uh, codes that we need to update based on uh, requirements that have passed at the state level that we now need to integrate into our local codes. We're kind of laying out, Ethan's done a great job and we actually have a, a work plan, a Gantt chart that shows the timeline of each of those steps. So uh, we've presented that to the planning commission at this point, got some feedback. And then again, we'll kind of present that same information, but with the revisions that we've incorporated um, to you as a, a joint session here um, in the coming months.
Okay. So moving on here, just a little refresh on the sub area planning effort. So this is the area of study for the downtown. This is the area of study for Tim and Landing. And so the sub area plan will encompass that area. So they start with doing existing conditions.
Should go back just a second. The point um, that goes down to Spencer Road. The black line.
This line?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, down here?
Uh-huh. Is, is that just merely mirroring where our city limits ends currently or?
No, I don't think so because I think all or most of this is city limits.
Something like arbitrary uh, definition.
Does it go, does it go as far as Summit Landing?
Say that again.
Does it go as far as Summit Grove?
No, cuz they're out, it's, they're just outside of our city limits. So the, the black border there stays within our city limits.
Point being is if we could get Summit Grove in our.
Yeah, totally.
City limits.
Right, so, so that, we would address that through a comp plan update.
Right.
Through this comp plan, we could go, okay, well, maybe we want to grow that direction and expand our urban growth boundary to take that area in. So that would be the next step would be to bring it into our UGA and then eventually to annex. But right now it sits outside of our.
Just outside.
Yeah, outside of our incorporated limits in our UGA.
It'd make far more sense for us to add it to our city limits um, than Ridgefield simply because we have more services.
Sure. Well, it's touching, almost touching us, so that's something that we can plug into that comprehensive plan process potentially. And, you know, we can, we can, at a high level, maybe explore that in the sub area plan. You know, we probably would want to be cautious on how much we're, you know, focusing outside of our city limits. Um, you know, in depth planning, but I think conceptually that's, you know, maybe that's a concept that comes. But yeah, I mean, whether through the sub area plan or the comprehensive plan update, we have some mechanisms that are currently, you know, in place to start looking at that.
Pros and cons to the costs. So we can be in the dialogue when we get to the point where we have some positives.
And I want to say like in the last comp plan update and I think prior, when, you know, the county, Ridgefield and the center have talked about future growth and so on, I think there's sort of a, it might be an unwritten policy.
I think it is.
A date on about, you know, two ninety ninth is the.
Yep.
Demilitarized zone or something like that, separating north from south. And Ridgefield won't go across that line, we won't go south of that line in terms of bringing areas into our city. I don't know if that is still.
I think that's sort of the, I, I think you're right. It's sort of an unwritten handshake agreement that was made years ago and it's sort of been adhered to, you know? But it's not formal for sure.
Right. So we're, we're not currently in conflict with our uh, neighbor to the, to the south, but you know, we could go there to defend our boundaries if we needed to, right? The battle against Ridgefield.
And they have enough.
All right, so uh, start with existing conditions analysis. Then they do community outreach. The community outreach part is really important because the uh, sub area plans are derived from a vision that comes from input from the community, from the planning commission, from the council and uh, the stakeholder group. So then refine and adopting the plans and then there'll be uh, the environmental work, the planned action area piece of it. Timeline, we're just getting started. And it extends well into twenty twenty four, looking for adoption towards the end of twenty twenty four. And any questions about this project? So let's talk a little bit about Junction. So this piece where I'm hovering the mouse, that is the minute management site. And as you probably see, you know, when you drive past there, there's been some grading activity going on and some ground prep. And uh, I believe they're moving forward first with the hotel pad and with the uh, convenience store.
Yeah, and the new Fuel Island. And each of those three components has a different contractor, interestingly enough. So they're gonna be bumping elbows a little bit out there, but.
Isn't there supposed to be a little strip mall, right?
Yeah, so there'll be a, a commercial and a fast food as well.
The technical term is uh, single level multi tenant retail.
Oh, okay.
That sounds a lot better.
There you go.
Well, you just never know.
That piece, so the, the pieces that are developing, hotels plan to go up in this area, convenience store, Fuel Island around here. And then on this side is the single level multi tenant retail.
Yes.
And then up in this corner is a, a drive through restaurant pad is what's planned.
What do you think the best place for salt and straw would be?
So then. Well, didn't I get here that we were getting a water park up there? Was that rumors that there was like?
That's always been a discussion.
I thought that that, and then somebody, they were making it sound like it was real. I was like, you know, just obviously community, that they were saying it was going in with the hotel was like a water themed park or some kind of, am I right? Haven't you guys heard that? Yeah.
I think that's like a, a rumor, but there's no plans on the table.
Sure, sure. But that's why I'm like, what's, yeah, I was just curious.
Callet's Tribe has this piece of property, which is called Three B Properties. And this piece, which is Fudge Property, except for they carved out a little piece over here in a boundary line adjustment where the Fudge family still has a house and a couple of buildings or something like that, right? Uh, so they control those properties. This uh, tribe also has this property on the corner. There are a couple of like little remnant parcels from the interchange construction. And then this piece, which is uh, John Van Vessum's property, uh, currently is under contract. So there's a developer that's looking at um, you know, option of a hotel, some restaurant, retail space on that property as well. And so we expect that they'll come in probably February, March for pre-application conference.
Not surprising that they will put another hotel.
This uh, piece just south of it is this tribe's uh, they own it. It's a stormwater facility. So it takes water from like this side of the interchange, basically, for stormwater management. And then, let's see. This piece is the Carl's commercial piece where the rockery is, is a temporary use.
How's that business going? You guys know?
Last word I had, um, a couple of months ago, they, they were pretty happy with how it's performing. Getting a lot of activity out there and so doing good business. This is the old landfill site.
But he still says I'm just never in a landfill.
So this piece, which has the rockery up on the front end and extends back quite a ways. Obviously the developable part is kind of in this frontage in the mid part. And there's been some interest in the past in this parcel.
Some steep slopes.
Yeah, there are some steep slopes. There was uh, somebody who wanted to uh, like look at doing some apartments and senior living. Um, but I, I believe uh, you know, they couldn't come to terms on, you know, price and terms with the property owner. Uh, so it remains, it's available for a long. So it remains, it's available for longer-term development. As well as all these are, most of these are Carlson properties. There's a few along Paradise Park Road that are owned by other parties. So, and my understanding is Carlson, they're looking for a buyer who'll buy the whole thing.
Sure, they want it easy.
They don't want to parse it out.
Makes sense, that just takes a lot of time.
Well, and they could be left, you know, holding the bag on a parcel that's not maybe as desirable or as easy to, you know.
The runt of the
So they're, they're still looking for a buyer. I know they've had, you know, you all know Skip and
Does he take IOUs? No.
Skip has mentioned that, you know, periodically someone comes and asks him some questions, kicks tires a little bit on the
Sure.
On the properties. So that's currently what's going on up at the Junction.
But I'm sure you, as you can imagine, once we get the other stuff going, I mean, it's just going to create more interest. I mean, it's just going to get more developers to come here and sniff around when you see, oh, they got this and this and
Yeah.
It helps, right?
You know, there's, there's been a lot of catalyzing development up there. First, the interchange reconstruction was a big one.
Yeah.
The sewer line going in, the casino. Now their hotel will be opening up this spring. We've got, you know, Minute Management's going, the tribe purchasing 3B and Fudge Properties. I mean, I don't know that they know exactly what they want to do with those properties yet. But I think that could be catalyzing because obviously they have
They're still
Good partnership with Mohegan Sun and Ailun A in investing in those sites.
But we, correct me if I'm wrong, because like even, so they own that land now. So even if whatever kind of businesses they run there, we don't profit off that at all, right?
Well, no, because they're in the city.
Okay, that's
That's something we'll talk about.
Okay, that's what I was confused at, because I mean, aren't they, so they do obviously give Ridgefield funds, right? Or there's no really funds they give them?
They're not, Ridgefield's quite a ways south of the reservation.
I see.
And so I know they have given funds to Ridgefield, you know, sort of
Sure, okay.
But the reservation sits outside
I see.
It's a code, but it's still unincorporated.
Okay, 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 that's what makes sense. So once they come over on this side and then they're in technically in the center city limits, just because they own that land, what they operate is still
Subject.
Subject to, oh, okay.
Just like everybody else.
Oh, interesting, I thought once they bought something, it would exempt from that.
They can pursue an exemption.
I see, because they, yeah, if it's big enough for them, yeah.
Right, and, but I think it has to be for things like social services, nonprofit type of
Like healthcare, when they give like that, yeah, okay.
So let's talk about, that's a good segue into this next item, which is the Calitz Tribe relationship. And I'll just kind of go through some of the agenda items that we've been kicking around with the tribe for quite a while. And then I'll talk about the process going forward, right? So things we've been talking about for years with them since the enacting of the Intergovernmental Agreement. Monument signs and landscaping in the roundabouts has been an area of discussion. Probably a bigger one is the Paradise Park Road, La Center Road intersection. The Intergovernmental Agreement calls for the tribe to put, to contribute towards a signal, a traffic signal at this intersection.
Oh, wow.
And it's an inflation-adjusted $500,000. So, you know, back when it was signed in 2016, inflation adjusts that to current. And that's what their contribution would be towards signalization of this intersection. Problem with that is that this roundabout, the center of this roundabout sits about 450 feet from the center of this intersection. And typically you want to see at least 500-foot spacing. And on a freeway off-ramp,
Yeah.
What could happen is if you have a red light here and you have traffic waiting to move east, it could back down the ramp. And WashDOT doesn't like that because it creates a situation of potential high-speed rear-end crashes. So we've done some work over the years. And I think what's preferred here would be a roundabout to keep the traffic flowing. Been talking with the tribe about kicking off this project, needing to meet together and work together and what that would look like. And now that they own these properties, they're very interested in seeing a roundabout here. And with their property holdings can make that happen.
Sure.
You know, the right-of-way acquisition can be a lot easier cooperating with the tribe on it than trying to acquire from a private property owner, a different private property owner. Aesthetically, it matches because, you know, you've got these two roundabouts here, you've got a roundabout over here, and you can have one here. Right? So that's, that's a big agenda item for us to start working on. It's probably a good, a good one for us to kind of test drive the relationship, the working relationship between the city and the tribe, is we meet together and
Sure, over something that's not controversial. It's like, yeah.
Something that's been of interest to the city and many of our citizens has been changing the zip code up the junction to be a La Center zip code. Takes an act of Congress to do that. And of course, everybody in the, you know, for the majority of the people in the zip code need to be in favor of the change. The reservation currently sits in the Ridgefield zip code, as does some land on the east side of the junction. So in the past, when we've talked with the tribe about that, you know, you're, you're the Ailun A Casino, Calitz Indian Tribe Reservation at the La Center Junction, but you're in Ridgefield.
I know, you take X at 16.
A land that identity has been a topic of discussion. But they haven't really been willing in the past to talk about changing. So we'll continue to broach that subject. Wastewater Services is, has been a topic of conversation with them here in the recent past. And the system up there actually supports, it's, they're connected to our system through the Force Main out in front of the convenience store. You turn one valve off and you turn another one on and their flow would come to our wastewater treatment plant. To handle that volume, we'd have to do some things at our plant to make that work.
Sorry, where do they, they process it themselves right now, right?
Right now, what they do is they process the liquids.
Right, and then they send the solids.
The solids come to us.
Yeah, that's right. And then you're trying to get all of that, obviously. So how do you take, how do you convince them of that?
Uh, well, their system has been the subject of some controversy.
Sure, issues.
And as they continue to develop on the reservation, they'll either need to expand the capacity of that plant or they'll need to find an alternative.
So you guys are just waiting for them to
Yeah, I think that's, that's part of the discussion, right? When would it be timely to
Yeah.
Put in an agreement for them to be our wastewater customer?
Yeah, that'd be, yeah, for sure.
And that could, you know, some of the thinking was that having them as a rape here could replace some of the revenue lost by closure of half of our card rooms.
Right.
Right? So can mitigate some of that and provide some financial sustainability. There's a latecomer agreement for folks who develop on, you know, on the east side of the junction, there are basically three basins. There's the one up there at the junction, there's one kind of in the middle, and then there's Timon. And there, you know, so as you develop properties along there and connect to the Force Main, the city collects what's called a latecomer fee because the tribe, you know, in advance built that Force Main. And so those properties will pay a proportionate share for that investment we collect and then remit to the tribe. It's part of that agreement.
Nice.
Right?
And they have money to fund, so that works out nice.
And so, you know, kind of an ongoing topic of discussion is the latecomer agreement and how to incentivize investment or development along in those basins so that the tribe receives a return on their investment in the system. And obviously with them purchasing property up at the junction and pursuing, you know, they'll go down the path planned and pursue development, that'll, that'll help.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
They can pay themselves back.
Right.
So another big topic that we want to pursue is just kind of this joint vision for what develops up at the junction. And that there's complementary development on the city side of the junction and on the reservation side of the junction, that we're all sort of with the same mind of what we want to see happen there. We were meeting with, I think it was when Dave Barnett, right after he became chairman of the tribe, again, the second time, and second or third time, yeah. And, you know, we were talking about the east side of the junction. They didn't own any property on the east side at that point. And we had some folks kind of kicking tires up there, wanting to build like 100,000, 100,000 square foot warehousing distribution types of buildings. And I sort of think that discussion might have spurred them moving towards acquiring property. Because, you know, you're going to build this five-star hotel, this restaurant on the roof, and do you want 100,000 square foot warehousing distribution facility as the view shed? As you look to the east.
Yeah, totally, makes sense.
So they're very interested in seeing that we develop things that are complementary and cohesive, right, and mutually beneficial.
We tell them if they change your zip code, we can do a lot of things. Just kidding.
So something that they are interested in pursuing, so currently the Intergovernmental Agreement states that they will not bring land into trust on the side of Interstate 5. And that's something that they would like to modify because they would like to bring those properties that they've acquired into trust, right? And so as we have that discussion, that next item on the list, payment in lieu of taxes, would be part of a, you know, negotiation that we were going to. If we're going to modify the IGA, we need to talk about what does the revenues, revenue loss look like versus this cost of service? What would the city be providing in terms of services? And so a lot of details to work out there. But just to, let's see. And Maria, I'm gonna mess with this a little bit here. Well, I want to exit the full screen and I want to zoom in on this. Maybe. Where's my little bar so I can scroll over? Oh, there you go, you're helping me out, thank you. So in 2018, the city commissioned a study to look at the La Center Interchange. Part of that sub-area plan that was developed up there, they did some market studies analyzing that form of development and potential revenues to the city. So, and this is something if you're interested in, we can get copies of it for you. It's quite a lengthy report, but I just excerpted a couple of pages out of here.
Do you have it electronically?
Do have it electronically, yeah. It does, I think it exceeds the limits that our email system allows. So we might have to do like a Dropbox thing where we give you a link and you download it, right? So what this study did is they looked at the junction, they did kind of a north area and they did a south area, and they did these analyses that show, you know, the different infrastructure required, what the costs are going to be to develop sites and on and on, right? So here's the south site development cost. So north is now to your right. So north is up here, this is that north site, the center road, and these are the south properties that they're looking at. So you get some idea of the costs. And then you get these analyses that show, so on the north site gives you gross acres and how much developed square foot. They make some assumptions about different types of uses. And then get down to economic impacts, number of jobs, wages, output, and so on. And then these fiscal impacts is kind of where the rubber meets the road in terms of payment in lieu of tax, right? So now the assumptions might be a little bit different because let's say they do want to develop a water park up there, right? So we would need to look at what do those fiscal impacts, what are those if they develop the water park under the city jurisdiction, what's the revenue generation? And if we go with, you know, they take it into trust and it's under their jurisdiction, we need to balance out that cost of service.
What does sewer lie in with that?
What's that?
What does sewer come in with that? So if they put in that, but let's say, okay, we're not collecting the sales tax revenue, what about the sewer? They would still need to pay for that, right? I mean, if they were They'd be a customer in that sense still.
Yeah.
Okay, but we just wouldn't be getting the sales tax or whatever.
And so for like a major commercial development, there are likely some instruments that we would use, like maybe a development agreement or, you know, a utility ratepayer customer agreement to negotiate what their rates are going to be. And then in terms of funding the general fund, then, you know, utilities excise tax, what utilities excise tax rate they might
Sure.
And we have to get into the long-term impact with the number of vehicles in the road.
Yep, to look at roads and
So even if they change the IGA, it doesn't, it can't change everything. It can only talk about sales tax specifically mostly, is that really what protects them from?
No, it's
Or they can try to include anything they want as long as the other party agrees. But obviously, are we ever going to, oh, yeah, you don't ever have to pay for your sewage processing. We'll just take it for, you know?
Right, that's it, so you have property tax,
Right.
You have sales tax that you would collect on a development that's in the city.
Right.
And then there's the utilities that you would provide, and there's a cost for the city to do that, which is recovered in the rates. And then there's utilities excise tax that funds other general government services. So you, you look at all those things, a whole mix and under different conditions, right? In the city versus not in the city, and look at the cost of service. But, so just looking at these figures here, so the average annual for that north site at the time that they did the study, four or five years ago, they were forecasting about 600,000 in annual sales tax revenue and about 400 and almost 500,000 in annual property tax revenue, right? On that south site, similar analysis, looking at about 760,000 in annual sales tax revenue and property tax revenue, 550,000. So part of what we would want to do, I think, as we proceed down this path, looking at modifications to the Intergovernmental Agreement and doing sort of this cost-benefit analysis to help us make that decision, would be to update a study, work with the tribe and update this analysis. And we'll probably just call the same consultant that did this and say, come out.
Can you just pump it up a few?
Well, just come out and refresh the numbers, right? Account for inflation, maybe the uses we're going to talk about might be a little bit different based on what the tribe wants to develop there, and we would just
Yeah, they have to kind of say somewhat of what they want to do, obviously.
Right.
But they're just not telling us.
They, I think they have ideas. And, you know, just to give you an idea of, of the tribe, right? They're like a big family. Big.
Sure.
And they've got
All watching out for each other.
Crazy uncles, and they've got wise grandmothers and the whole bit, right? So there's a little bit of everything there. And so Chairwoman Kinswood Geysers, she's got her hands full trying to keep everybody on track. So everybody's got different ideas about what they want to see. So I don't think that they've coalesced around a specific plan for development up there. Because the whole family has to be on board, pretty much, to make it work, right? So the challenge of governance is not just here.
Yeah, oh, sure. Well, then you have the family dynamic, that makes it even worse.
Oh, yeah.
It can, yeah, because you're adding a lot of that. I think Casey's not right there.
So we can, we can give you this study, and I think it would be useful to take a look at that as we have more discussions with the tribe. So, uh, let's see, am I missing a slide here? I think I am. Oh, here we go, yep. So we were talking about payment in lieu of tax, and I kind of jumped to that land use study. So in terms of the engagement process with the tribe, what we're doing now is, at this point, Kent Caputo and I are meeting at least monthly and talking through this process and shaping And talking through this process and shaping it up and the agendas and so on. So I think what we've tried to do is either bring Mayor Thornton or Mayor Protem Servini to meet with. Um Chairwoman Geiser, Kinswood Geiser uh in those monthly meetings. And there have been meetings with the Chairwoman and Mayor Thornton and myself and Kent. We've had a few of those, but we want to get into a regular pattern of meeting, especially as we work on this project of. Tackling these agenda items, right? I think meeting quarterly or more often, we would have those executive sponsors and staff leads. Plus council liaisons, so two tribal council members, two city council members. Uh included in in those meetings and the staff department heads from the tribe alienating the city. Like they have a public works director up there. Who knows Brian? And you know, so they would be in that meeting and they're, you know, finance administration person with Maria. And we would just have our corresponding staff in those meetings. And then further, uh twice a year, biannually, or more often, looking to have all those folks. Plus the full tribal and city councils. So maybe the first meeting, we would invite them all to come to city hall and we'd have a meeting here and.
Say like twenty two speakers, right?
Mm hmm. We'd fill the room.
Yeah.
You know, and then the next one, we'd go up there. We definitely have to have food. It's good to break bread with our our colleagues. So that's kind of what we're looking at. In terms of this engagement process. So a lot of work will be done at the staff level, preparing the agendas. Preparing those agenda items and presentations of information. Um for consumption of everybody else. Okay? Any questions about that? That's gonna roll out. So. Anything else on economic development? Which are kind of the big pieces that are moving in the community for economic development.
How's the uh business doing that's in the old city hall? I thought they'd be up and thumping.
Yeah, so I haven't checked in with them since the holidays here, but there was some, I think the. Physical therapy's parent company was having some internal.
Oh, sorry, I meant.
Oh, this one over here. Oh, it's old C D B. I need to check in with them too. Um last we spoke, they were looking at doing some interior changes. To add like a sink and stuff for their copy area, but. Yeah, I haven't spoken with uh Mr. Wells in a little while, but.
I just, I've been too busy, but I've been, I've just expected to see.
That's on my, yeah, that's on my list. I think they're like the window there, they were ordering a non-bank window, you know? And I think that was taken a while to get here. So I, I, it's on my list to check in with him and see how things are going.
Okay.
And then the one over here, um just since I already started talking about it. Um so we did the um land use process and had a hearing to do the conditional use and approve that. So that's approved. So we're just kind of waiting for them. We have sort of a draft lease. We had one sort of point of comment that we were kind of going back and forth on, but I think. With holidays and then some internal stuff that they had going on with their parent company, it was a little slow. So.
I see.
Um we're anticipating that they're, you know, they're still interested, they're still planning on moving forward. We just have to kind of get to the final. Lease and then bring that to council.
Nice. So that's like our two main new ones coming in. Do we have anything else?
Well, then we have the basement down here, which is sort of the last city owned space. There's been some discussions with uh Clark Cowlett's Fire Rescue about them. Potentially leasing that space.
Nice.
Cause I guess they're, they have several new positions in the twenty twenty three budget that they're filling and they need some space for them. So.
Yeah, they're opening an EMS division.
Now we need bigger hospitals.
Putting two ambulances on.
And the pizza place, not city owned, but obviously, but um they're reopening as well. Um so they've been coming in. I guess there's a process.
What they're reopening is the pizza place?
A pizza place is reopening there.
As Buc-E's.
It's not going to be Buc-E's.
Oh, I was like, wow.
It's gonna be.
That's interesting.
Word on the street is it's gonna be Podunk Pizza.
Oh, I've never heard. Oh, you mean it's.
That's gonna be the name.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But we'll see. But um I guess there's a process. I was just talking to the building official about this, uh that since it's been a commercial kitchen that's been closed for a period. There's sort of a restarting process we have to go through with the building department, with Clark uh Department of Health and everyone. So they're going through that process right now to. To reopen the kitchen and sort of make sure that it, everything, you know, grease traps and fire hoods and everything are all in working order.
Yeah, that's good. Well, I hope, yeah, we can all show up and support them.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need restaurants in this town for sure.
Nice to have some pizza around here.
Oh, yes. I'm driving a pop pizza and giving Ridgefield our money. Gee, many Christmas. Yeah.
Okay, so I have a brief uh update on police stuff. And the update really is that we have a scope work for Burke Consulting and we will. Share in the cost of this. And it's essentially to do a police study, kind of like we did for our jurisdiction. Uh with some different nuances to it. When we did the one a couple of years ago. We were looking at, you know, factors of like capital for a building. You know, what would be necessary for a building and what it takes to run cars and lots of other things, kind of soup to nuts of. What's the cost of service to run this department and how should it be staffed and and on and on, right? The goal of this one really is to, is we looked at call volumes, so we can basically just give them the information that we pulled. But they'll look at Ridgefield's call volumes and look at some similar things there and then put the two together and see how do you service all these calls? In this geography. That's really the goal. And then that would form the basis. Uh terms and conditions for an agreement between us and Ridgefield. And so I think what Steve signed this by the end of, he got them started in December, I think.
Yeah, I think we're supposed to start after January first.
Okay.
Taking more than the first quarter of this year. And I've already, um, I've gone through all already, but I need a new year's cast. And I took twenty fifteen through twenty twenty two. Both Ridgefield and ours, and I already put it in documents. So they asked for anything we have, hopefully this seems more low and I did the proportionality. So that I want, I want to do the same with this size all.
But so.
So you're saying this is just gonna be a less study, it's or it's gonna be less things to look at, less variables.
Yeah, I think it's.
Less expensive and a little bit quicker, hopefully.
Well.
Not quicker, but I just mean they're not having to look at so many different variables.
It's expense wise, it's fifty six thousand. Yeah, so well, I think we're doing about half of that.
Oh, I see. I thought you meant that was our portion.
No, our, our portion will be about twenty eight. We did the one a couple of years ago for under twenty thousand.
Yeah. It was around a hundred forty. So they're thinking both those studies are studied and they're studied.
And studying them?
They're studying them, yes. And then they have, the biggest thing they have to worry about is, okay, what kind of staffing do we need? What, what is the proportionality of the cost?
Right.
Because like the, we don't need police chief, we'll just pay for proportion of their police chief.
Sure.
And then uh contractually, uh vehicle replacements, stuff like that. And then I think the really biggest and most important piece. Is what is the process going to be for you as a council and there? We have priorities that you want for your community and being able to coordinate that with Ridgefield. Because they're gonna also have their city council, city administrator priorities, so they have to achieve the balance now.
Do you mean, for example, like if we say we want twenty four hour coverage?
Twenty four hour coverage.
So and then they have to say, okay, well, how many officers is that gonna?
Yeah, we want twenty four hour patrol or do you, you want twenty hours patrol, but we have, we want twenty four hour response.
Sure.
Which is, you know, for an emergency, those things.
Different, yeah.
But just a, a day to day things. Uh if you're having a problem with vandalism in a park, well, how do we communicate that? And what's the process for us to communicate in order to, uh, we have to go through the, their city manager down through the police chief. I mean, those are things we need to work on. Interactually. And uh so it, you'll take a little bit of time, but I think that it's all doable, everybody. I mean, this isn't rocket science.
Right, because you have all those other things like when you serve people or house calls and those are different, right? Then obviously patrolling and needing action. Yeah.
I don't think we're able to regulate their level of services. Pretty similar to ours, you know, it's a call too small. That's what it is. Um and so that's what we're gonna do. And then, you know, just the, the, I don't think, I want to think about long term, okay? Uh how do we use our facility here? Uh is it just for the officers or record reports?
Sure.
Ultimately funding a part time person, you have our really open certain hours of weeks, so they can get fingerprinted, can get those kinds of things.
Sure.
So what kind of services are we providing? So those are all things. But at the end of the day, all that goes into this spreadsheet and spits out a cost. And then you as a council have to say, well, this is what, what it is. And then if it's too much, what do we need to get that to the other town? But I, what's it, think like, you know, type about lack of law, police departments leave black holes all day. We do, we do that every day with services. And our goal is to try to do is get uh have police services at the central center for, for the best possible we can. So at the end of the day, we don't have to worry about the day to day operations because that takes everyone's time. You know, recruitment, uh uh labor issues, our liability issues, things that we deal with every day. Want to be able to write a check every month that somebody says, okay, that's, that's your, your job to worry about that. And then at the back end, we want some kind of monthly reports uh or in some kind of like. So like who's gonna be the attending as a police chief here? It's gonna be their police chief that's gonna be the tenant, those kinds of.
Sure.
But we, we want to have all that spelled out. So it's, it's almost invisible to you that the police department really could reach the police department.
Sure.
So that's where our goal is. Because, you know, I, you know, think about this, police chief for us is about two hundred and five thousand dollars. A position costs us two hundred and five thousand. We could just, you know, make it a hundred and fifty thousand, right? It's gonna be less than that. And then you did that with some more stuff. You could free up a couple, couple hundred thousand bucks, let your city administrator.
Sure, sure, yeah.
You know, limited, limited resources.
Right, right.
So that's what our goal is.
I mean, yeah, exactly. I mean, luckily we have a very low crime. So yeah.
We do, I mean, we average, uh again, um both uh fifteen, uh eight, we call it passing offices a month. Spent that way forever.
Right, but you have that, that, that balance of public perception. They want that comfort blanket. They want to see that and I get that. But at the same time, it's like, yeah, what's reality?
Right.
You know, helping them understand how safe of a town they actually live in. What's I'm talking about? Yes. Right, it feels good, yeah. I mean, we all want that, but.
I'm surprised at the number, we have, uh, you know, we have our officers, police officers, local officers, the county in here. County called every day and I'd probably say, it's half the time people don't recognize that that's not a little sooner police officer.
Totally.
They, they just want a police officer there, right?
Exactly.
And we've had great cooperation with everybody. And it also is, it, it also helps us, we're all in the same dispatch center. We all use the same records system, we all train together. So it's really kind of invisible. Process. So but at the end of the day, we want to make sure that everyone's getting our money for.
Right, we're getting coverage, yes.
You know, nobody wants to subsidize each other. We want AR, AR, but Ridgefield doesn't want to subsidize the center, et cetera. And then they're gonna want a long term contract.
Yeah.
Uh and really we're behind it and we really pay and that's, that's true.
Sure.
And that's what these consultants are here for.
Yeah, that's great.
Other questions on this topic? Okay? So I think we're at the end here. Um so a, a couple of prompts. So I've, I've had this one prompt was what topics do you want to discuss? Together in future work sessions and retreats? What kinds of things do you want to learn about or hear about or understand better? Um and some of those came up today. Uh but another one is, uh, you know, we've talked about. Economic development and those sub bullets there, talked about police and uh. You know, some of those things really are strategic initiatives. They're multi-year, gonna take a long time to see fruition on some of them. Right? Our, our budget is an annual budget, right? So uh that's more of a tactical policy document. What are we doing this next year? And these strategic initiatives overlap budget cycles. And so, you know, as we think about. We have these strategic initiatives we're already pursuing. Uh but they don't necessarily fit in a stated mission statement, value statement, you know, vision statement. And so probably what we need to work on is pulling all that together, right? It becomes part of a cohesive picture of what it is we're all trying to do. Um so time's really yours now to talk about whatever you want to talk about.
Something that's interesting about, about, excuse me, law enforcement services is that. You know, we talk about whether we want twenty four hour coverage or whether we want emergency response. And when you look at, when you, when you approach the topic of. Coverage by the hour, it can be very deceiving because we want to pay for twenty four hours of coverage. Well, that doesn't mean you're gonna get somebody sitting in here all the way around the clock. If you have a fairly significant event. And you have four officers that respond to it, that's four hours for every one hour that they're on scene. And there's. All of the post scene work that they have to do. So if they're on scene for an hour. And then each one of them has to write a report that could take another hour. And then one of the four has to make the transport to jail, which is another probably two hours round trip. You know, you've got, you've got four hours for the one hour on scene. You've got four hours for the four hours. Or for the one hour that they're sitting and writing reports, plus another. Two hours for the, for the round trip of the person that has to drive the person downtown. And so. And, and that's just to complete the initial portion of it. So you're already eight hours into your twenty four hours for a, for a one hour. Nine one one call, whether it be a, you know, a DUI or a DB or anything else. And then.
And if you have depositions and court and all that stuff.
Yeah, and then if there's any follow up that needs to be done, any further investigation that needs to be done. We have the, the rates that we would have to still pay for the prosecution, the costs of housing someone in, in. The jail. And so it's very deceiving how much law enforcement services actually cost.
And. But like they always say that, that car drive around out there by itself.
Can you use a mic, please, chief? Thanks.
I mean, sorry. So you're right, Casey, there's a, a ton of backend cost. Uh that a lot of people don't see and that's the invisible cost, like you said, uh, uh, you know, the, and it goes beyond it. You know, the officer had to have training or has to have training to be able to handle that kind of call. So it just magnifies the cost of everything.
Yeah, public works has to keep the cars running, right? Yeah, there's a whole bunch of infrastructure that makes it work, make it happen.
And I did do a, a comparison that came up the last council meeting of. Budget comparison, why are budget, police budgets one point eight uh with, and I believe that uh. I'm gonna say the city around Montesano, Montesano. Uh so I, I actually went through their budget and our budget line by line because everybody wants to know, when you're looking at police budgets, why, why is our police budget? Why are we estimating our police department budget for eleven people is one point eight million? And uh this agency has eleven police officers and their budget is actually was one point four million. So that's a, a big, big gap. So I went through and I went and analyzed everything, the number of positions, what they pay. Uh we both budget eleven positions. So we both have police chiefs, but their police chief is total compensation in uh is two oh three, I'm sorry. For Lassiter, we're two hundred and three thousand dollars for our police chief, because we have to pay comps comparable to everybody around here. Up uh their police chief's one fifty three, oh eighty five. Uh they have a police lieutenant, which we don't. He's making a hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars, but we have two police sergeants. And our police sergeants make about a hundred and fifty two thousand dollars each. So ours are making, you know, roughly about thirty, you know, thirty thousand dollars more than their police lieutenant. And then you, so that's what you have to go through line by line in these budgets. At the end of the day, our salary benefits are about two hundred and seventy five thousand. Dollars more than their agency. So if you take our one point eight and their one point four. So if you take our one point eight and their one point four, and you add their two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars worth of benefits, at the end of the day, we're only about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a, 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 apart from one another. But what they do, uh, up in that agency in that city, they have a centralized services budget. So IT, utilities, all that stuff is paid out of a separate, uh, account for everybody. Well, we break ours down into the police department. So that breaks, that starts taking away from the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, even more. So then you're down to under a hundred, uh, hundred thousand dollars. And then we, we built in a bunch of recruitment costs because we have vacancies where they don't. So at the end of the day, we're almost apples to apples when you actually go down and drill into the details. But, so you, I just, that's just something I wanted to make sure everybody, that we do look at other people's budgets. But when you get down, uh, cost of living has a lot to do with it. Uh, their housing average is about four hundred and twenty thousand, and we're at about six hundred and fifty-six thousand. So we have to pay our people more money. Uh, we have to compete. Yeah, yeah, it was median, median home sales price.
In Los Angeles?
Yes, that was, and that was from Zillow from October twenty twenty-two. The median in our city was six fifty-six, and theirs is only four hundred and twenty thousand. So they're.
Because you have some outliers.
Yeah, so and that's. Yeah, so that's how, uh, I just want to make sure that people recognize that we're building the, our budgets. And when we're paying our employees, uh, we have to pay what's comparable our metro area. And so that's, I just want to bring that up too.
Other thoughts, comments?
I mean, at some point, I'd like to maybe try and come up with like a list or like a small list, like attainable goals, you know? Something that we could.
Would.
Maybe focus. And that can be maybe for another meeting or whatever, but.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe, you know, we can come up with some kind of format similar to this that works for us.
I like that as a template.
Yeah, looks good.
Kind of one-pager and easy to see. So we could, we could do something similar to this.
It'd be easy to put on our website.
Yeah, can hang it up there on the wall underneath your pictures instead of the woman.
Because at the end of the day, your goals should be, you know, your goals are up there on that piece of paper. This is what we want as a city. And then each individual apartment, our goals are goals to support your goals.
Right.
And that's how it should work.
So, um, what I can do, maybe we, we take another stab in February, maybe add a five-thirty workshop before, is a five-thirty workshop before the first meeting in February available?
Um.
Five-thirty.
Let's see, uh.
It's the eighth.
February eighth.
It's fine with me.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's either we do it then or we find an alternative time, day and time, right? Um, it might just be more convenient because it's on council night to do it right before a council meeting.
The council meetings start in January, switch weeks from my parent weeks, and then I have my kids now on those weeks. So now I'm like, eh, it makes me less like, I'm already, you know, giving more time while my kids are sitting at home alone with, you know.
Bring them, fill the seats.
Yeah, sure, yeah. Ed, start educating them, yeah.
There's plenty of, uh, you know, donuts and cookies and stuff for me.
Well, yeah, that'll keep them okay for about twenty minutes, okay?
We're gonna like a sugar rush going and then.
They're gonna be, yeah. Just hook up Fortnite to the big, no, it's fine, it's fine. I'll just stick to the, I just, yeah. It's just.
Work back on the schedule to the second, fourth, sixth.
Yeah.
So I'll go ahead and prepare for that, compile notes, maybe start drafting up a format that we can start to populate. And then, uh, I can send that out. You can kind of ruminate on it, send me your thoughts, you know, give me a call, whatever. All right? So, uh, so good, good thought. Anything else?
Nope, that was a good idea.
Okay. All right. Well, I think we have lunch here and we can, I think we can probably wrap up.
Are you gonna come back?
We don't, no, we're done.
I think so. I think we're done. So probably, we'll probably eat and we'll call it good. So Mayor, Mayor Protam Servany, I'll turn it back to you if you want to wrap us up.
So.
I first of all, want to thank all of you for coming and taking part of your Saturday. I think it's always productive to get a lot of our thoughts up there. I appreciate it. So we will entertain a motion to close the retreat.
So.
Second.
Okay, first and a second to close today's council retreat. Thank you, everyone.